Welcome everyone to the committee of the whole admin and operations meeting Monday, September ninth, six thirty here in the township office. And the township chambers here in Spencerville. Need a motion for approval of the agenda. Moved by Councilor Ward, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dilibah. Any discussion, any items that need to be moved or changed or anything like that? Seeing and hearing none, then I'll call the question all in favor of agenda. Disclosure of pecuniary interest, conflict of interest in the general nature thereof, does anyone have any? Hey, business arising from previous committee minutes, if any, does anyone have any business arising? Okay, seeing none, then we're on to delegations and presentations and. I'd like to welcome the world of F A S D support network for the red shoe run, Rob Moore and Diane. Come on up to the podium, Rob and Diane. Typically, we allow, I think it's ten minutes. To do the presentation, I know you sent some material out in advance, we're pretty. A little bit loose with our ten minutes, so if you need, you know, a couple of seconds longer, it won't be, she gave you the look when I said it too. If you need a minute or two longer, we're totally fine with that, so welcome and and Clara.
All right, thank you so much, Sheldon, and it's wonderful to see all of you again, if you may, you may remember back in March. We invited us to come as a delegation at that point. I'll start off with a very brief update as a result of that, thanks in a large part to your generosity in terms of community grant. We did actually have our very first red shoe run in this past May. We actually, we had three hundred and forty-three people coming to attend that day. And it was much more successful than we ever dreamed or hoped for, so. I can tell you that it was actually the largest F A S D gathering that's ever happened in Ontario and. Also because of your generosity, it enabled us to build the infrastructure to be able to do this moving forward now, so we have a dedicated website to it. We have a dedicated marketing campaign that we don't have to repeat again. And so we're now looking to build off of that and we're looking to look at what can we do next year and do it specifically in Johnstown. So I would like to, I'm gonna actually, if I can just show you the video, I'm gonna scroll back up. The, there we go, the link right at the bottom there, this is just the montage or highlight of the day itself.
Today, I want to share an important topic with you. Increasing awareness for children and youth living with the invisible disability of fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, or F A S D. Did you know in Canada today, seventy percent of individuals living with F A S D live in poverty? They also represent a large percentage of youth not in employment, education, or training. However, rural F A S D with their F A S D phrases are changing that. By sharing their direct voice, the story of their superpower. Canada is becoming a more accessible, equitable, inclusive, and diverse country than ever before.
I have two children that have A S D as well as myself. And getting services has been difficult. It's paying with over through agencies, really super together to try and get help.
The demand for this direct voice training is rapidly spreading throughout the world. And rural F A S D no longer has the financial capacity to meet that demand. Through your generous contribution, you will be giving additional opportunities to these F A S D fighters and others to share their stories.
These are like to share regarding that particular video, there's five families featured in that family in in that video, three of them are residents of Edwardsburg Park. And so we actually used a lot of the pictures that's resolved the red shoe run in helping us compile and create that video. Moving on then, I'm gonna get you to go to the next slide down, so I really wanna focus on the red shoes run at this point. So what we're proposing is, as an organization, we're actually looking to do four of these events next year. We're looking to do one in Spitzwals, one in Kipbill, one in Johnstown, and one in. Duckwood Township, just outside of Carleton Place. And so we're also trying to make sure that each event is a little bit different and unique to that particular locale. And when we were looking at the the Kipbill one, we're actually doing a fully certified triathlon, we've got connected with Triathlon Ontario. And with you folks, when I'm gonna get you to go to the next slide down. When we got looking at the map for Johnstown. We realized, starting at the pool. If you go down the road, right to that dot there and go back, that's exactly one kilometer. If you go down and do the loop and back, that's exactly three kilometers. And if you go down, do the loop twice and go back, you actually have exactly five kilometers. And so at that point, we were thinking. Number one, if your starting point and your end pointer at the same location, it cuts, it cuts your costs way down. It also makes it extremely viable to now do a timed race. Where we can actually start bringing in. Serious runners from across Ontario and so on. When we were at the Dare to Care Festival here in Rockville this past spring, we actually met an individual who's part of the local club. That is those those runners. And so he actually said, if we can get this set up. He will make sure that he gets it communicated through his partnerships and and the folks that he's looking at there. So that's essentially what we're proposing is off of this, we do know. We're gonna need a location where everyone can gather, and that's where, again, we were thinking the pool and the parking and everything and and all of that that's there. Is a really good location from that standpoint. We do realize that we would need a little bit of help broadly with our O P P force. Particularly with the highway two, because there is. There is, we would have to cut off the roads a little bit basically for the couple hours that we would be doing this. The idea would be we would actually start with the one K run, which is kind of a fun walk run type thing. And what we did in Monkski is we actually basically had all the folks kind of line up along the road. And so the folks that are walking and running, they do their little stretch, they come back, everybody's cheering them on. From there, then we would do the three and the five actually at the same time. So that we wouldn't have to block off the roads for an extended amount of time, could actually have all contained in the same. And then we would, and and really, we're talking about a morning. So we would have everyone come in at about nine o'clock in the morning, they would register, we'd start the run, the one K at about ten. By ten thirty, we should be able to start the three and the five, by eleven thirty, it should be done, and by noon, we're out of there. And so that's essentially what we're type, what we're proposing, when we look at our schedule of the other four of the four events. We want to do thirty-five. I'm not gonna give you an exact date in July, because based on, I wanted to make sure, first of all, that we had your support and that we would be able to access this and. Answer any questions that you may have associated with it. But then, once we did that, I would have to get a hold of the timing company, there's a timing company just outside of Guelph. That we've been working with here and been talking to, I have to find out what their schedule is. And as to what weekend in July they might have available to be able to come and run this. And then the last piece of it is ultimately, this is about creating F A S D awareness. We would have an information booth there, we would also use parts of the the red shoe run that we did in this past summer. We have kids games there, we have, we did some egg races, we did some potato sack races, we did. We had some other things that were set up in the log for some of the younger kids to do and lots of face painting, we had the the high school kids come in and do some face painting with the. Which you saw in the pictures there, and just really make a family fun event as part of that serious run as well. And so I'm gonna finish off with turning it over to Diane, who I'm sure is gonna talk about why. It's such a exciting thing for us to be here on September ninth.
And part of partnerships that we established through our first run. You know, are so important to us every week for every family, the public health was there. Kids Inclusive for Brain Health was there, and they run craft kits and different family oriented events, so we reached to those organizations again. Personally, I've been attached to awareness and education for F A S D for fifteen years and. Would drive to Kingston or Ottawa to get supports. Our five families that founded our organization back in two thousand and eighteen. Let it be more accessible, particularly for the rural community. The boundaries that exist for our families to get able to get supports in a rural setting. You know, like so obvious, and we had to be distinctive. So I'm I'm so proud of the successes that that we've already established. Our son's thirty-four, he has children, he is working, he has so many strengths, but. He needs life coaches, he needs developmental services supports, he needs healthcare. And so this this organization has helped us navigate finding those good supports. So we would, we would be so pleased and proud to represent our organization here in July.
Awesome, thanks Diane. Before we start. The location in Johnstown, are you tied to the it having to go to the highway two? Did you look at other options?
No, I, I, yeah, absolutely, and and I recognize the, no, we are not tied to that location, this was. Like I said, when we were looking at the map, but we recognized. Yeah, blocking of the road is is, that's definitely the where the biggest challenge is, so certainly open to tweaking that.
The complexity of closing the highway two, which isn't our road, it's United County's road.
Yeah.
You know, the need for the the O P P, I just see that as a bigger hurdle when. When if we stick to municipal roads in that area. Or the Port and Windmill Road, where it really doesn't affect anybody from, and we do that for. The May fourth run or the May the fourth be with you or whatever, it's the Prescott Night Run, I think is what it's called. We use utilize that area too. I'm just concerned about the highway two portion, so I just wanna make sure you're not tied to it.
No.
Then we can come up with, all right, so then I'll stop talking and I'll open it to the group then for. Discussions, I know you guys have talked about. This during community grants and donations, and I know you were a strong supporter of F A S D, so why don't you, why don't you go first?
Sure, sounds good, and and just to clarify, just as I was, you know, you know, the the ask basically is, is is a little bit of. Helping introduce you to people around in the area here and support with regards to helping to hear words, your budget of four thousand dollars, you'll look for five, five, five hundred dollars or so. I'm assuming that's on the twenty twenty-five budget from our perspective as well, so and I don't know, but you know.
My my perspective would be that would be an ask under the twenty twenty-five community grants and donations.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so I figured we we, you know, see that at that point in time. And and I mean, you know, I mean, I think I said prior as well, and when we had the conversation that we were foster parents and we. You know, we we saw our share of probably undiagnosed F A S D ourselves with regards to the children that came through our house, and it's. It's 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 a cause that that needs some support for sure, and as far as I'm concerned, you got it, and but as far as. I believe the mayor is right, that hopefully there's a way we can find a way around the highway two, because I do think that'll be a complex complexity, but. Having having walked the streets of Johnstown at various times, there's a lot of good areas that I think you could have a a run within the town itself, that have been around the highway, so. Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
I did my five K today. Just living in Johnstown, I'm a little bit on that, my car toys. Your car doesn't count. I I'm I'm all joke aside, I'm a hundred percent. For it, I just think that I agree with the mayor, I'd like to have it all up there in Johnstown, I think that's a great spot. And maybe we can go down Elizabeth and Second Street by the school and do that. And then that's all our, that's all of our township property.
Okay.
And we could have, we could do our own cutting off and traffic and so on with staff and so on, so I I think that can work.
Okay.
I'm a hundred and ten percent with you, whatever you need. If we can help, we're in.
Very much appreciated.
Echoing what's said at that end of the table, a hundred percent behind you.
Thank you.
I'm definitely one hundred percent, I've dealt with people that have had problems and I'm I'm full one hundred percent for it, it's fantastic, great idea, doing a great job.
Thank you, folks.
There's not not much left to be said, huge supporter, so yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, good. I'll say it's nice to have sort of of an update in advance of. Twenty twenty-five ask for community grants as to how well that money from this year went. Towards building the infrastructure that you guys needed, I mean, it doesn't, I know the asks have been there for several years. We've never really seen this kind of a presentation as to how the money was spent and. You know, how much it made a benefit towards what you're trying to build for the future, I think it's fantastic to have you here. Doing that certainly goes a long way towards my support for next year, so. You know, it's it's good to hear that, I love the idea of the run in Johnstown, I think there's some complexities, but to me, there's. There really is a hurdle that that we can't, you know, over overcome, where we'll find a way, the the key, I think, though. That I got out of yours, and I love the idea of the triathlon, the triathlon eventually. We have a fantastic area here for for something like that, and that would draw a ton of people to the township, but starting small is a great idea. And finding finding a way to make sure that you meet. That five kilometer, that ten kilometer number, whatever it needs to be to draw in the type of runner that you're looking for, I think we need to find a way to make sure that we. We hit that mark, right? So there are points of interest that, you know, eventually maybe we can work to to make sure the runs go for those points of interest and makes it even better for the runners that are coming as well.
Well, it was, and it was definitely part of that, I mean, you have. That waterfront trailer in particular, like there's so many respects in Johnstown that if we can really highlight that, particularly in our marketing and promotion that. Yes, that's really where we wanna be, is really bring it out, those those wonderful features that Johnstown has.
Yeah, and I, and I, you know, as a delegation, thank you for the delegation, I guess, what I'm what I'm saying, I know. This group will have a have a further conversation about the asks and and see. It sounds like there's very strong support around the table for it. And see what we can come up with. To to help support it, because it's certainly something, you know, listening to everyone around the table, there was, there certainly wasn't any hesitation, everybody was yes, 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 so. It's it's good to have that that quick positive, so. Yeah.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Take care. Thank you.
All right, so next up. We are looking at the Patterson Road allowance upgrade request, that's Josh McGregor. Philbin, Philbin and my environmental project management solutions, all right, so. You were here last week, right? Yeah, yeah, that was, I think, our mistake, right, that. Yeah. We think we were, the delegation was last week, he was just here, oh, we were just here, okay.
Kind of get a feel for the process, we were also here back in June.
Okay, great.
Just to get a sense of the process.
Good, all right, come on up to the mic, ten minutes, you can see we're a little loose with our. With our time, if we absolutely have to be.
We'll take you ten minutes.
All right, fire away.
All right, so thank you, Chair Council, time and effort expended to consider our application today. Appreciate that. We would also like to recognize and give gratitude to the council for their support of economic development. In your community, as was demonstrated in the council of the whole meeting back in June. It was it was recognized. So through the chair, thank you and gratitude to the staff. We'd also like to recognize the hard work and knowledge base of staff. Contribute to assisting council in making decisions. In particular, the CEO and Director of Operations. Most impressed, particularly back in June. So a little bit of background here with regard to our application for the entranceway of Patterson Road. The purpose and intent of the application. And so I can have access to the back of my property. Don't have, if I don't have an entranceway. So that my son, Josh. Can expand his sandblasting and coating business. For details on the scope of his existing business. And economic and employment benefits to the community. See the back of the flyer that I've all given you. So you flip that over, there are a few numbers. Hope it was more impressive. So honestly, in this regard, we were a little perplexed as to why our application was not recommended by staff. A, despite our economic benefits, the community is going to be realizing. And B, that a previous application back in June, or an application to widen and maintain an unopened. Road, namely Holy Lane. Was recommended and was subsequently allowed, like by pension. So would have to be a pension to to get an entranceway, like what's with that? I can say a few other ways to go with that, but that was our sentiments when we laughed going like, what's with that? So comments regarding the action item, recommendation is. A, inaccurate, Greg Philban is the property owner, not Josh Philban. B, it's missing information, does not highlight the benefits to the community, it only talks about the expenses to the. To the community, doesn't talk about the benefits, talks about the. The expenses that, and it's not factual. Does not specify expenses the county would would incur, is it five dollars, is it fifty thousand dollars, is it twenty-five, is it a hundred thousand? Doesn't say that. It indicates that my son Josh has agreed, does not indicate. That my son Josh has agreed to meet all of the scope exceptions of the bylaw, that is the meaning of the action item. So with regard to the bylaw, the word generally, well, that's a pretty broad statement. Like what does that mean, generally? It opens the door to the stated scope exception. In conclusion, in our opinion, the bylaw does not disallow. An entranceway. The bylaw states that if the application complies, or the applicant complies with the scope exceptions, then council can approve it. So thank you, Chair Council, for the time and effort. Spending to consider our application. We'd also like to recognize and give gratitude to the council for their support effective in the community. As as has been demonstrated on that. Thank you.
Thank you, stay stay though, because I'm sure that you've inspired a few questions. Chris, help me get in the spot first.
Sure, why not, right? So Patterson, that's just the sort of extension where you do the S turn around Plent's mail, right, that's where that is.
Yes.
And you're looking for the extension going that way or coming from like.
Four hundred meters.
Yeah, so four hundred meters you're looking for. And so you've obviously applied for that, and we're 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 told no at this point in time, so I was aware of that as well. You know, we're we're trying to obviously be helpful, right, you know, I mean, this is the conversation to have tonight, you know, and and so. You know, I mean, I think it's important for us to make sure we're developing business, but you know, there's also a township perspective that we have to understand on the staff side, that's what the arguments there are, and. You know, I I think we'd have to do a little more looking into that exactly, because I don't have in front of me all the 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 report and everything that you received, I don't think, unless I just missed it somewhere in my agenda here. So, you know, but.
Just stop for one second, I just wanna ask staff if they're, if we have received a report, because I'm, I'm not. Aware that I received a report either, so.
God, I feel good.
Because I've. I do occasionally miss stuff, but I just wanna make sure that I.
It feels good too.
Through the chair, the Director of Operations dash W C I O has been in communication with the applicants. At that point in time, whenever they were originally starting to organize a delegation for the June committee, the whole meeting. A draft was provided to them, and that is what they're basing their information off of, but it has not been provided to council at this point in time or committee. They wanted our Director of Operations, that they wanted to have them present their full information before we brought something back and determining where council stands at that point.
Okay, so when we get that, then we actually will, yeah, we'll get that full package. Once they, once they put it forward for action, is that the idea?
Yeah, through 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 the chair, it's it's council's decision with respect to unopened allowances, so. They are, they are correct with respect to the recommendation that was put, that it was putting forward was the remain status quo.
Right.
Not upgraded, but yes, it would be something that would come back into the board.
Yeah, and, okay, and we can expect, are we expecting to see it?
I expect that you will see it next committee meeting.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, sorry, Chris. I just wanted to make, while you're here as your delegation, you wouldn't be part of. Of the action item, or like this is sort of the process in which I'll make the delegation, you get to speak, you. Say your piece, we ask you a bunch of questions that way when it comes to us. At a committee, it's only the committee that's that does the discussion, you wouldn't. We occasionally step outside that that rule if there is a question that needs to be answered during during the process, but it's. Not likely that we would go down that road, that's sort of why we're. Yeah, asking questions tonight, but we don't really have the information, so.
Yeah, and I guess that's where I'm I'm stuck a little bit, is 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 I'd love to get more of the context from the staff side of, you know, things like. You know, is this done elsewhere and and where we have a road maintained privately. To the township standard and or what other options are there, and so, so I just don't have that in front of me, but but I mean, I I support. Trying to help to keep the business rolling and to make it more more acceptable. You know, I don't have all the information in front of me, unfortunately, to be able to.
Well, the bylaw clearly states that, you know, if you meet the exceptions, it lists them all. It says, so Josh has written a letter, you need me, I can write the letter. And say, we're gonna comply, we're gonna fix the road, we're gonna do the ditching, we're gonna do the brushing, you get to keep the four inch logs. And we're talking four hundred meters here.
No, and and like I said, I appreciate that through the chair, and like I said, I think that's where, you know, we need to get the staff's, the staff's report. On this, explaining all that, and then we'll have this with your, with the context of this discussion, be able to go from there for sure, and. You know, like I said, I'm I'm very much, we'll do what we can to just support the business, it's important, you're.
Yeah, because I've seen you in the June meeting, you went above and beyond. Except to to support economic development in the community, so we felt really good after leaving in June, you know, okay, these folks are all businessmen. They understand it's small business, you know, has lots of challenges, and you know, for my son, if I have to go out and buy land. To put a facility to run his business, that's a lot of money. And also, I don't have access to my property, I'm like. I can even go back to twenty fifteen, I was never consulted, I think the whole process was flawed. Because I'm gonna tell you, if in twenty fifteen this thing had showed up on my, on in my a letter, and my, and I had been consulted, I would've said, wait a minute, you're constraining my ability to do business, you know. You know, so.
So through the chair, maybe I, maybe that's something, actually, I'll ask later on, that's the twenty fifteen history, I don't have the history that one either at this point in time, so that's where I'm I'm missing something, but.
I've been living in this area for forty years. I can tell you if a letter showed up on my doorstep and said, hey, we're gonna constrict what you can do on the back of your property, I would have had something to say about it. Yeah, and I, I'd like to just throw that out there.
I'm just reading, you know, what the delegation and the presentation is, and it's a, it's a, an upgrade request, right, for the road allowance. So, so I think we've. Like, we don't have the information in front of us, we don't have an action item in front of us, we, for the best of my knowledge, staff haven't been asked to move. The item in front of us as well, so. As well, so, like, while I support you in, in concept, until we actually have information in front of us.
Sure, no, I, I wasn't expecting that.
Like, I mean, our staff, when. Like, I, I have to defend our staff a little bit here in, in that our, our staff have, like, bylaws they have to follow. They make recommendations when residents come in that if things don't comply with that, with those, they encourage them to find ways to comply with. You know, the rules that we find ourselves in, and my experience with our staff is they typically do a fantastic job doing that. That doesn't mean that we don't go outside of what the recommendations are, you're stating that, that we do actually, and, and we see the need sometimes to, to do things. But staff have a set of rules to follow.
No, I understand.
Until we're knowledgeable of what those changes need to be, we don't go outside those rules.
The bylaw is clear that they, you know, generally and typically. Will not recommend it, but what is the word generally?
But they don't necessarily need to recommend it. They need to bring it forward so that we can give them direction on what we want to do.
So I'm just stating my position that I don't think it was factually correct. The action item. It doesn't show both sides of the coin. It just says there's gonna be expenses on the county side, and it doesn't represent the economic development opportunities for the community. Because a lot of money going into the community. The dollars are all there. They tire, hardware, rest cut, building supplies, the list goes on and on and on. Why would you shut it? For four hundred meters. That's mine. You guys are all businessmen. I'm just throwing that out there. So that, I think that the action item should have reflected both sides of the coin.
They haven't seen an action item. I understand where you're coming from.
Give me a copy of it, I got one in mind.
But I don't have an action item. Tell our staff puts a report in front of us that we can digest.
I'm telling you what the action item is.
I'm not here to argue with you, right? I'm just here to state our side of it. We have a process that we have to follow.
Okay, so I'm just, this is my last opportunity to take my case.
Where, where are you working on your business right now?
Eighty percent of my thoughts are.
Sorry?
All right. Eighty percent of my business is off site.
Eighty percent is off site? So you go to my house and sandblast something or go to my.
He's working for the LRT, I don't be ridiculous.
I'm sorry?
I'm working on the LRTs right now.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, but this is what you want to do?
Yes, I'd like to put a building up.
Building up on Patterson Road, just so I get my.
And more, then I can bring more business there, right?
Right. So we open up the Patterson Road. You're hoping to put a building up and then run your business out of that?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And it's four hundred, you're saying that we're your property? Is that? That's the north side? Nope, sorry, south side of Patterson.
I guess north side.
No, be the south side of Patterson? Would it be going down Patterson on your left or your right?
Right.
Okay, so it is a north side.
No, you're heading east.
Oh, I'm headed, if I'm headed west.
Mail, come on to Patterson, right hand side of the road, which is north side.
Okay.
Crazy weird.
Okay, so if I'm heading west, it's on my right hand side?
It's before?
No.
I've just been trying to help you. It was before the pit for. After Brown's pit, just after Brown's pit, right where the road thirty-six twenty-two, Patterson Road is the last house on that road. Thirty meters after that, you get a sign plugged in the lane light, unmaintained road. From that unmaintained sign to where the entrance will be for.
So the entrance way.
I know where it is.
Exists right now, because if I had got a, if I had gotten told in twenty fifteen that I can't put an entrance way, I would've told my son, forget it. It's not happening. There's a problem. I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So the entrance way exists right now.
Yeah, no.
He's put in an entrance way, he has a shop back there, and you know, the town, county has told us to cease doing business there.
Okay, well, look for, we're looking for our staff. And we're here to work with staff and yourself, so. No, there's no issues here right now, so.
Is it, is it?
Thank you.
Well, he's already got a shop there, he's already built an entrance way, so he's, he's not telling you the truth. The, the, the entrance way is there, because, and I'm going back to this, if I'd known that, I would've said, Josh, it's a great idea, but what's the problem? We have to go and talk to the community before you drop thirty thousand dollars on an entrance way and a lane way in there.
Is it zone commercial? Zone residential?
Yes, well, I am in rural residential. There you are.
Okay.
Through the chair, I have no questions for this delegation at this time.
Well, I know already you answered the question, I wonder exactly where it was, so I understand now.
Good.
So we can see your actions.
No, and I, I, my only question is to staff, we'll see something in October that we can digest then, is that? Is he a nodding from D O L? Yeah. Chris, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, good.
Okay, thanks for the consideration.
Good, thank you. Uh, there is no consent agenda tonight, is there? There's nothing on it? I don't need to read it if it's, there's nothing on it, correct? I can just move to seven? Alright, so seven is my little, not little, this one's a big one. Discussion item, and, and that item is, is ultimately to. Find a way to express support for. The continuation and. To ensure that, that both Centennial and, and South Ed stay, stay open despite the ask or. In spite of the act for. A new school to be opened. To replace Wellington and. Maynard Schools. I mean, when Benson. Closed in Cardinal, the South Ed School was on the list for closures, it was removed from that. List. Maynard stayed on and was slated for closure, although it never. Closed, the discussion's certainly been around Wellington and Maynard combining to create. A new school and. Mayor Shaver was, was on, on the radio indicated that they had had a delegation. With. The Ministry of Education during EMO. Regarding the potential of opening a new school. Somewhere in Augusta near where the Prescott Arena is located. And. I know when the discussion happened, when, when the Benson closure happened and when. South Ed was, was up for potential closure. The talk then was the creation, much like Swiftwater. The talk was a, a combination of those three schools, Maynard, Wellington, and South Ed could be combined to create. One large school that would reach the population that, that the board demands, I think it's around five hundred students. For opening, and so when I heard the, the talk about it, it, it concerned me. I know that, that South Ed is no longer on the closure but. List, there's a moratorium on school closures from the province. We, we certainly had Mr. McAllister at the United Counties. Who indicated that there wouldn't be no more closures. As long as the moratorium was, was still in place by the province, so. Again. Not trying to fan the flames of a fire, I'm just trying to get ahead before. Before, I, I want to express support for, for the maintenance and, and the remaining open of Edwardsburg Cardinal Schools. We've seen what happened at. In Benson, we don't want that again, we're, you know, we're experiencing the second highest growth in Leeds and Grenville. In, in our township, I think our census data is eleven point nine percent. Growth rate right now, we're seeing lots of young families, we see, you know, we, we just talked about the porch party, a bunch of families in Johnstown want to move it forward. We have a lot of. Younger families coming back into Edwardsburg Cardinal, we certainly want to support them with. With the small rural schools that we have. And I just struggle to see them, them close, they're fantastic for Johnstown, they're fantastic. For Spencerville, and we both, we all know that if we're gonna experience growth. It's going to be in, in that order through there, so I know a lot of people as they move into. Small rural areas do so so that their kids can walk to schools, so. My reason for bringing this. For discussion among the group was I'm asking that. That council move some form of a resolution forward in, in a positive manner. Regardless of what Prescott and, and Augusta apply for, I mean, Maynard is going to close, and if they need a new school, so, so be it, that's great, that's. That's on them, but I don't want it to be at expen, at a, at an expense of, of an Edwardsburg Cardinal, uh, school. So. Not being not supportive of what they're doing. But certainly remaining supportive to that not being at the expense of our schools, so. Yeah, so that's, that's it, that's, I, I'd like to see that go to the school board, so the school board understands. What rural schools mean to Edwardsburg Cardinal, both the two that we have. In a very clear and concise manner. And, and certainly I want our, our M P P to understand where, where we stand on that as well. And I think that it's important that Augusta and Prescott also know where we stand when it comes to. Edwardburg, Edwardsburg Cardinal Schools being closed. Or, or not necessarily, I don't think the, the intent is to. Is to use the word closed, I think that they want to use the word. Being moved or, or, you know, being amalgamated, and I, I just don't, I said. From day one when I've been involved, that I have zero interest. In schools and our township being closed. So. Discussion, that's sort of the preamble, it's a long version of what staff has provided for you guys. I apologize, but I'm, this is one that, this is a hell for me that. This is a big one, I don't. I'm pretty passionate about this one, so you, you, who wants to go? You want to go?
Through the, through the chair, I think you could've. Hold on for another forty-five minutes, I'd be behind you, this could possibly be one of the most important things we do as this council. I'm ready to buy the t-shirts and the bumper stickers, put the billboards up. But again, we need to do this in a positive fashion, so not that we're, you know, we don't like your school idea, your school idea is great, it's just not for us. So we hate your schools, we love our local schools.
Yeah, and I think, and I think for me that it's important, right, because we're not. I don't want to fan the flames and get people, you know, out with the t-shirts and the bumper stickers, that's not, not at all my, not at all my intention. My intention is to make sure that the school board understands that we're not part of those discussions. We don't want to be part of those discussions, we have no interest. I don't know that we're at that point where we have to do a fight yet, because we're not on a closure list by any. Any, but before they come to us and say, hey, do you want to be part of this? I'd prefer that we went to them and said, we're not interested.
That's. Well, let's get the billboard ready just in case.
I think it's a, to me, like, we've already lost the biggest school we had. And it's a safety issue, like I just said earlier before the meeting started, heard Steve say, well, his grandchildren are gonna be on a bus at seven o'clock in the morning. In the future, if they end up building one in North Augusta, kids from back in this area are gonna be all on a bus to North.
No, it would be, the new one would be the, the location would be near the new arena in Prescott.
So, it's a long way to go, and it's, to me. We've got to have a school, like you said earlier, apparently to, you know, people who were into the, the township and. With our new business being recognized as the best. It's gonna draw a lot more people in, and I think we should keep our schools at one hundred percent behind, not, not go anywhere.
Yeah, me too. Karen?
One hundred, twenty percent. Yeah, I think it's really important to have them. Have a local school that the kids can get to, and, and send to community as well, it's just important.
Yeah, the thought of putting a junior kindergarten child on a bus for twenty-five or thirty-minute ride or a forty-minute ride to him is.
When I lived in my family with him, and it was, you know, seeing my little one get on the bus. And he couldn't even step up on the bus, the bus driver had to reach down to get him, to get him up there. And it's terrible, it's an awful feeling. I like the idea that we can want a school.
Yeah, yeah, small rural, I mean, small, especially when you're younger, like when you're in that, that K to six. You know, that matters. When you're in seven, you know, my, uh, grade seven kid hops on the bus every morning now at twenty after seven and is in Prescott by. Ten, ten to eight, but I mean, he's also, you know, twelve, great, so, you know, that's, he's not four.
No, and exactly, like, they're four when they're heading to school now, it's just crazy. Mine hadn't even turned four, he was like a week away from being four, and yeah, awful. He's fine, but it was awful.
Right. Chris?
And, and just following up on that, I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, we're already making our, our. Our grade seven to twelve students do this, and my, my kids, we try, we were, you know, we're a lot more north of, of County Road Two, for instance, so. It was over an hour for them to get from my place to Prescott to go to the, uh, you know, to the high school there, and I just can't imagine. Younger kids in that, in that, you know, J K to grade five, doing the same trip, I mean, they'll spend, they'll spend two and a half hours on the bus. Plus the fact they're in a full day school all of a sudden, and it's, 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 it's too much for them, and then, you know, I mean, you know. I, I just, I just can't see us doing that, I think that's not, that's, that's not an acceptable approach for our young, for our youth. And on top of that, I mean, we are really. As far as I can tell, we're on the cusp of, of, of something big around here as far as a significant housing project or housing projects coming here from Michigan. And all of a sudden, we're gonna have so many more children that are gonna need to go to school, and we're gonna have to pump them all on buses, and everybody's gonna say we don't have money for buses, and it's just. You know, we gotta keep it local, we gotta keep both these schools open, and I mean, I foresee a time where we might need to look for another school as well, in, in Cardinal perhaps again, you know, but we're not there yet, but it could happen, so. Definitely excited to be able to get into these schools, so.
Die on the hill with you, Mr. Mayor. Very, very important.
Yes, I appreciate that.
We, we work too hard to business drive, we work too hard. For, you know, our, our people in our township, and, and to give them a place to live and, and have fun and. And that's, that's not a burden that they need, the parent needs, to even go through that. I don't even, I don't want to alarm them. But I don't have a, I don't have a, an issue making a resolution to the upper campus school board. And send it off to our M P P that, hey. We want our schools protected.
Yeah, we don't have a burden of that.
So you have, I, I mean, and, and that's fine, if Prescott and, and Maynard can come together, that's great. Good for them. We don't want our children to be part of our school.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Just to let you know, uh. I know bus companies now are having a really, really hard time buying, finding drivers. I walk up my dog with a fellow and. At least two to three times a month. His grandson doesn't go to school because his school bus driver, bus driver falls in sick or something. So this is, and people don't want to be down the road, so. If we've got that in our back pocket, that you can't even supply bus drivers. So I, I don't want to see anything good.
And I, I had the opportunity to tour Swiftwater, like the new school in Rockville, and it is truly. Fantastic, like there is, it is the envy of, of all schools, it has a high school sized gym. It's open, it's up to date, it's modern, it's, it's got an enormous, it's, it's fantastic, right? But the kids are going from Tonyetta and. And Pompano, right, they're already Rockville kids, so. We're talking about, you know, possibly, you know, five hundred kids, I think that that's the number the school board uses as a minimum. And if I'm not mistaken, there's around two hundred at each of those schools, Maynard and Wellington, so, so I don't think that they reach the number when it comes to. To reaching that, that number, so I know. Rural life is a choice, when people choose to, you know, locate rurally. They have to accept sometimes that there's a well or septic, right? One of those choices that we made when we moved back. To Cardinal was that we would have a school that, you know, was two blocks from, from Charles' grandparents' house. And that was, that was the reason. We came back so that he could enjoy what we did as kids, that rural school exposure, his, uh, school exposure and. So that has been fantastic, and it'll be much like ours at So Grenville as well, but. When people are moving into Johnstown and Spencerville, as long as those schools can be viable and stay open and have the numbers to support. Being there, I, you know, I think we should fight like hell to keep. Keep them there, and, and not that we have to right now, I think we're getting well ahead of this, but I think signaling to the school board that we want no part of it. That at least they'll know that in advance. Okay, now I'm gonna look at staff. How do we do that? Is that a letter? Is that a letter under the mayor's pen? Or is it a resolution? Cause resolution support seems to be where the most strength is.
Through the chair, um I'd recommend, I could draft up a resolution to come forward to the council meeting at the end of the month. Um initiating the go-to kind of school board, M P Ps, M Ps, local municipalities and whoever else you may. Look to have ministry officials, et cetera, and send that out. If we get any traction, if we don't, then potentially a letter down the road. Maybe appropriate, only, and there's insured the mayor as well. Depending on how far you wanna go with this.
Yeah.
A lot of times resolutions, they can be circulated out and then we kinda wait and see if we receive any type of response back if all.
Yeah, it signifies, it signifies though to the board as a township, they're gonna have, if, you know, we're not willing. And, and if they're, and if they're asking us if we're willing, we're saying we're not. And. If there's going to be anything that happens, that it's going to be against what, what we want as a township. And I think that that's more. I think that's more what I wanna signify to them ahead of them making any, you know, headway with the discussion, so. Okay, so do you need anything more than us? Did, did you get out of the conversation everything that you, you need? All right, does anybody have one last thought? Okay, now let's move, let's move on to B then, which is uh speed limit reduction for Sophia and Sutton and councillor Smale. I think you brought that one.
Yes, I did. Uh, I think from the people I've been talking to. Uh those signs to the, to the director of operations, to give all the information. I think if we had a couple of them put up or one put up, then we could know rather than just jumping the gun and throw a stop sign out to put them, lower the speed limit. But people, they say people aren't really speeding now, so.
So do you, are you suggesting that we defer discussion of this? Uh for now until staff has the amount of time that they need to arrange signage?
That's exactly what I'm doing, yes.
Okay, do you have the, do we need to move that or is that, we don't need to move? It's a discussion item. We can just ask that it be put on an agenda for further discussion to allow staff time to do their job?
Through the chair, you can do it like that. Um we always prefer actual directions. So if you'd like to.
Okay, so can you?
To a certain meeting would be perfect.
Okay, do you, do you wanna move that it be deferred then? You're the, you're the person who brought it and, and councillor Martell. So discussion on the deferral? Only the deferral, not the, not the actual reduction, just the deferral? Yeah, so. I think that makes no sense that, that we do that. Um that way we can give staff the appropriate amount of time to, to see. You know, it's been paved for a week, like, you know, um let's get the signs up and, and see. What happens and then if it becomes or remains an issue, then we can certainly put it on another agenda further down the road. There seems to be lots of information here. That we can bring back for a different discussion. Let's see what happens first. Thank you. Good? Okay, so then I think I have to call out for vote though, right? Okay, so all in favor? Okay, so action item then. Um I don't think from a direction standpoint, I don't think that there was direction to bring it back. Um just that it could be brought back at a different time. So I think we'll leave it uh to councillor Smale or another councillor um to bring it. Uh back through councillors' inquiries and notice the motion if, if they so choose. Okay? All right, so uh A A is J R D R, um branch two inspection report and I'll look to the C A O who speaks to this.
Through the C A O, we'll pass it to the, to the board manager.
Okay.
Thank you, through the chair. Tonight's topic is the J R D R branch two inspection report and recommendations. So tonight is to seek the board to proceed with maintenance work on branch two of the J R D R municipal drain. Under section seventy-four of the Drainage Act. So once the municipal drain has been constructed. Under the authority by, by by law, it becomes part of the municipal's infrastructure. Uh municipal, through its drainage superintendent is responsible for repairing, maintaining. The municipal drain on behalf of the community of landowner, landowners included in the attachment area of the drain. The drainage superintendent makes recommendations on required repairs and maintenance or future maintenance after completing inspection of the drain. Uh in December twenty twenty-three, Rick Galloway received a maintenance request from a resident along the James Riley Branch two municipal drain. The concern was related to poor drainage of the existing tiled field. And the reception was that it was related to required maintenance on the adjacent municipal drain. Rick Galloway completed an inspection of this entirety on James Riley Branch two municipal drain in February twenty twenty-four. Uh recommendation is to clean out the James Riley Branch two municipal drain to be completed at the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh subsequent to annual crop harvest. Policy implications, the Drainage Act requires the township to be responsible for repairing and maintaining. The municipal drain through its appointed drainage superintendent on behalf of the community and landowners, landowners involved in the drain. Strategic plan and protection means aligns it under the infrastructure pillar. More specifically, ensuring adequate drainage for township infrastructure and includes performing drainage assessments. And the financial considerations performed on the municipal drain under section seventy-four or seventy-nine Drainage Act. Would be billed up to the benefiting owners based on the assessment schedule.
Good. Okay. Um. I'll, I'll ask questions after um. Sure, sorry, I'll back on you.
Um so it, if I read this correctly, it's good, I think it's a good sign to see that. All the culverts look good and everything else. It's just really the ditch cleanup that we're looking at doing. Is that what I understand?
That's what I understand.
Perfect, okay. No, that's, that's good. I just wanna make sure that's clear. So otherwise uh, uh a good report and uh, let's see if we can get that done and hopefully there.
Um yes, I got a couple. I think I s- uh do the chair. Uh to Chris, is there, is there a price of ten thousand dollars? Does it say in here for?
Um uh.
The quote, I do believe I seen it, or maybe direction operations can help me?
Uh through the chair, the uh drainage super has indicated that it could be an, anywhere between ten to thirty thousand.
Okay, I thought it said ten.
I, I, I have no doubt, uh that, that uh ten thousand may have been mentioned in the report.
Okay, uh question number two, where's, where's the branch two, it's spelled the drain, the James Ri- uh Riley branch? I know we had issues before with this same drain, so I just wanna get ready. Uh before we start sending out bills for. Uh you know, the people who's gonna benefit from it. So where's, where's drain number two? Can someone help me? I see a, is it on County Road twenty-one?
Uh I think uh through the uh, um through the chair, uh correct. It, I think, right, right in around probably fifteen. Um County Road uh twenty-one. So if you recall back with the James Riley the Ri- Richter, the main portion of that drain uh was improved. Uh a decade ago.
Okay, yeah.
So uh the main drain was cleaned out and improved. However, there's about seven or eight branches off of that uh drain. The branches were not touched at that time.
Right.
Uh if you recall, probably four, five years ago, the uh Scotton branch. Uh we had done an inspection there and done some um uh clean it with respect to that.
And what branch was that? One?
Uh the Scotton branch, uh I'm not one hundred percent sure off the top.
Okay, so, so getting back to that, the, the, the branch number two, it's off of twenty-one and one, like if I want to go see that. Do I go past the twenty-one pass a nine mile and head, head east?
You would, uh of portions of that, you would be on private property.
Oh, private.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it, it's back uh uh behind, so.
Yeah, right, but it, it is on that, on twenty-one going, almost out of our township, right?
Uh the James Riley the Ri- Richter does feed into safe thunder.
Right, the second.
Correct.
Okay, I know where, okay, thank you.
You know which one it is?
All right.
You know which one it is now?
Yeah, yeah, I do. Thank you.
Just.
I can go for one. Yeah, thanks.
I think just through the, through the chair, notice was given to all the benefiting owners on that branch. That inspection was going to be taking place, so. Part of the bringing this forward at committee tonight is to ensure that's in the public record with respect to that.
Good.
And.
So they're where we're gonna do upkeep or no?
They, they, they will, they, they will be aware.
Okay.
Will be taking place.
Thank you. No, I'm, I'm just gonna get ready.
Yes.
Same way.
Councillor?
I have no questions. I fully support it. Good councillor?
No, I just, Steve asked the questions I didn't wanna ask where it was and stuff, but I remember the Scotton said it was done well, so.
Yeah. Karen? Okay.
Sure, I did find another question I had.
Absolutely, councillor.
So with regards to the cost, um the cost is borne by the users of the system. Is that how I understand that? Up to the chair?
To the chair, correct.
Okay.
So each, each area has, an engineer has that kinds of, uh. The charm of the catchment area, and then there's a formula based on. Where you are located within that catchment area, what's your, what's your benefits and, and, and the outlet factors are. And then based on that, so any, any upgrades or, or maintenance is, is built there based on that original schedule. In that fashion.
Okay, and then as a follow-up, and this might lead still to the um direct reparations or it might be to the treasurer, it might be to the C A O, I'm not sure, so. Uh so we get a price for all that. We divided up. Do we sort of, everybody here, here's your bill you get all of a sudden, or is it something that we do over time? Or how, what's the approach we take on how we reclaim that revenue?
I'll go their place.
I haven't been through this before, I guess.
So I think uh through the, through, through the chair, um we'll get a little bit better of an estimate. Do sort of uh calculations on what those uh costs will be for those individual properties. Um and we will, we will advise them. If it reaches a, a um. Particular threshold, uh value, then what we may do is bring back the bylaw, uh you know, extending the uh. Uh the payback period depending on, on what those, what those values are.
And really chair to the, to the character operator, we pay a portion too, township. As a rule, right? Out of that.
So through the, through the, through the chair, so certainly if it's, if, if the municipal drain. Um flows through a um roadway.
Yeah.
Uh then the municipality would be responsible for costs associated with that roadway. Uh with any of the uh portions of the drain that was beyond private property, it's the benefiting owners uh of, of that area.
Uh just one question to the chair to, to our operator. Do you have any idea how long it is of, of firecocks?
I'm not sure within the report if it actually specified the exact mentions, um.
Is it?
I can cer- I, I, I can certainly update uh committee. We just had some of the uh, some of the uh municipal rain uh. Happened updated, so we can, uh we can send it, I'm not sure if we need the full catching area.
Okay, thank you.
Long and the short, uh duly chair. It sounds like it's just a cleanup. Like, you know, nothing to be replaced, everything's good, just to dig it up and get the scrub out and so on.
Correct, that would fall under the section seventy-four.
Right.
Uh if it was.
We're quite fortunate.
If it wasn't, if it wasn't an improvement, uh then it would fall under a different section and it would be considerably more.
Um and I, I just have two, and I think, you know, in reading your report, I'm pretty sure I'm clear on this. Um there was a request to us. To have this done?
Uh through the chair, then it's correct.
Yeah, so, so they're identifying anyone, was it one of the benefiting folks? Like, is there issues that, of drainage and they felt it needed to be cleaned up?
So through, so through the chair, uh in, in order to make the request, you'd have to be part of the catchment uh area, on the benefiting owners. So it was, if, if it was one of the uh um affirmed locations within that catchment area.
Okay, um and, and the preliminary cost shows that it's, you know, seven thousand for the. You know, the one, the one part, the, the full drainage cleanout, uh ten thousand for the, for the total, but the number thirty thousand dollars has been. There's a big difference between seven, ten to thirty. Um my concern is that we jump to thirty and we don't. I like to know the price of these before we, before we agree it. Go ahead and do it. My concern is that that's three times as much budget, so will we?
So, so through the, so through the chair, there have been some inquiries from some of the benefiting landowners with respect to getting some additional work done.
Okay.
And that's why that, that range is, is.
Yeah.
What it is, ten, ten, ten to thirty, because it depends if the uh, because that would be built to that specific. Owner, not to the entire catching area. So the, the cleanout work, the basic work is probably, you're, you're probably looking between seven to twelve thousand. Um it's just whether some of that other work will uh have a pay place at that, you know, at that time, that could increase it uh.
And ultimately, they know, well, thank you for that extra information. It certainly makes me feel a lot more comfortable. So the, the beneficiary is the one who's requested. That more work potentially be done on their property. They know full well that they pay for it. Um it just gets done at the same time, built us and we build back for it.
Yeah, so sort of, so sort of the economy of scale while we're doing work instead of having it isolated with that small portion of work. We would do it when we're doing, yeah, uh full cleanout.
Right, so we um, um we certainly don't anticipate a return to what we walked into when we joined council six years ago. Which, which was, you know, a large issue of, you know, people doing work on their own property and, and stuff like that. This is sort of an avoidance of, of that and.
Uh through the, through the chair, correct. Um so once a request comes in and, and, and the drainage uh superintendent has inspected it. And indicates that they recommend work is done. Um for all intents and purposes, uh the, the council's hands are pretty tight because if. If we don't proceed with the maintenance work, then the, the one making the request can actually start through that um, uh the tribunal process.
Municipality act.
It's under the drainage.
Drainage act, yeah. Very important.
So.
Yeah, so we're good. All right, and. So the, the, I guess the additional cost isn't a concern then to me. It's a discussion that staff has had with the landowners and, or the landowner, and they understand that they're. They're the one that pays for it, so.
Correct, the drainage should be in, in, in contact with the owners, or it, it'll just be a relation upon whether that, whether that proceeds or doesn't.
Okay, no, that's perfect. All right, further discussion by anyone? Okay, I need a mover. The committee recommends that council approve the ma- was your question?
That was, cause that was.
So the committee recommends that council approve maintenance work on branch two of the J R D R municipal drain is recommended by the drainage superintendent. You'll move?
Still moving, yes.
You'll second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, further discussion at all? Hearing and seeing none, then I'll call the question. All in favor? Good.
First of all, the, the, the R D R. Especially you have some homework, too.
All right, uh number two, which is the Spencerville pumping station, uh number one pump upgrades, uh and its engineering. And I see Mr. Remmerman's here, so I think it's probably safe to assume through the C A O that Eric will be speaking to that.
That's correct, all right.
Through the chair, um on the twenty-seven, twenty-four, council passed the motion approving phase one of the project. To an upside limit of thirty thousand dollars and directs staff to consult E V V engineering to link the work. Just that we're, for phase one of the project was to ensure that the sanitary force being is capable of handling an increased uh horsepower pump. Um assessing mechanical variable alterations, assessing the grading system as well as the new pump controller. And develop the bypass plan. Uh phase two would include develop, schedule, the design and tender process. Isolate the well to assess for leakage and um also again to ensure that the pump meets the, the flow requirements of the station. Uh the E V V engineering um has advised us that they were unable to complete the engineering work in the timeframe that we have requested. So we consulted Novatech, we submitted a proposal. Um phase one is thirty-nine thousand to complete phase one and phase two, um came back at twenty-six thousand five hundred. Uh bylog twenty twenty-three fifty-one establishes policies with respect to. Uh, bylog twenty-two-three fifty-one establishes policies with respect to program and business services. It states that all expenditure shall within the current approved budget or within approved estimates. Prior approval council is required, and then over seventy-five thousand also requires approval by council. Um, this project does align with our strategic plan, um, as we're ensuring the viability of the Spencerville collection system by upgrading this, uh, upgrading the pump to handles. We initially scheduled this for twenty-twenty-six, but due to increased, uh, frequent pumping damage failures, uh, we expedited this for completion in twenty-twenty-five. Um, our plan is to have everything ready to complete this work as early into twenty-twenty-five as practical. Um, our current balance at our waste water reserve fund is four hundred eight thousand five hundred ninety-seven dollars in fourteen spins. Um, the, uh, remaining of the cost of the engineering would be budgeted for twenty-twenty-five as current capital.
Uh, thank you for that. Uh, just for my own ignorance on this, does more horsepower mean more pressure?
It, it, it's, um, possibly, and it also, it's a little bit complicated because it also depends on the length of force being, your size of your force being, so that's what the engineers will evaluate to, to make sure that not only can the force being gamble, which I think will, but also to provide new pumpers for the station, because every station is engineered. With the pump, which will give us, uh, uh, slightly, possibly slightly more flow.
Right. Yeah, 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 that makes sense. Uh, all right, questions? I'll just open it to anyone hands up maybe for this one. Anticipate a ton of talk, so. Steve?
Uh, Spencerville Pumping Station, is that the one at Drumm's? So I get my hands wrapped around there. And did we send that out for tender EBB? Or did we recommend them because it did work before?
We recommended EBB because they were doing our, doing, um, ECA amendments, so the ideal was to have one engineering firm work on both projects. But unfortunately, um, this falls under di- different department within EBB Engineering and they came back saying that they couldn't, uh, provide us, um, engineering work in the timeframe that we want, which is as soon as possible.
And which is? What was their timeframe?
The timeframe would be to complete phase one, um, by the end of this year, have a tender ready to go out, uh, through our, uh, engineering firm and, and be ready in twenty-twenty-five typically. Probably around spring would be in the, really summer would be the best time to do the project.
So has ABB said maybe they could do it by March of twenty-twenty-five?
Uh, they, they really didn't give us a specific timeframe, but, um, the idea is there, the pumps are about a long lead time, so you're looking at ten to twelve plus weeks. So to wait until March through the engineering, you're just pushing all that work off even further.
Right.
So we wanted, we want to get that done as soon as possible.
And Nova Tech will have that done phase one?
Uh, we revised that they'd have, uh, timeframe was within what they think.
No, I'm not gonna fool with that one. Too important, was just too important.
So just so we're clear though, because maybe it's just me and I'm missing something. I don't see a supply and install of anywhere in here. So this is just the engineering work behind getting the pump. This is not the pump included.
This is not the actual project, so that will be part of the, uh, design tender disruption to get that first going.
And then to the, uh, to the behaviorist point, my whole world revolves around supply and demand and schedules, and that twelve weeks is important and we, we can't take the risk, but, uh, no, I just, I just, you know, it's six, the, the price seems like a lot to me for engineering work unless we have a team of engineers for a few months at a time, which anyways, doesn't matter. That's the price that it is, but, uh, we gotta get this done, so.
What you're dealing with, that's right.
Yep. You know, it's unfortunate.
No, no. All right, and my, uh, my, do we see before that this is a replacement of Myers for flight? Is that so that it makes all of our pumps congruent?
Um, it would make, um, it would, if, once we do station one, all curve and all station one would be to the flight, and then we have two additional stations there still.
Okay, so we'll be looking to replace those at, those Myers at some.
It also would be to, to put it, to put everything over the flight would be, I think, the best.
Okay. All right. All right, and I guess the last one, and, and I know there's been a lot of talk around the table. It doesn't directly relate to this, but I just want to make sure that it, this doesn't limit us, that it actually enhances. Um, you know, there is talk of, you know, Baker subdivision right across, across the river. And that, the, the need for, you know, potential pumping station on the other side, you know, that sort of thing. So does this, this understands that, like, when doing this, it doesn't limit our ability to do anything like that, it?
No, it doesn't.
Still able to move forward if that's.
Yeah, because the Baker potential, any potential upgrades would be downstream of that pumping station, so probably one is collecting everything within Spencerville.
Yep.
So any potential upgrades would be downstream, so that would possibly even another station depending on, on engineering, but so. That's, that would separate.
Okay, all right. Right, and so, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, I'm not an engineer, I don't understand all of it, but I get that it's on the other side of the bomb, so it's, it's good, right? And it doesn't limit us in what we want, or what potentially could happen there.
No, I don't see, I don't see that.
Okay. That alleviates my concern then, um. There is a recommendation, correct? I need a mover for the recommendation. The re- recommendation reads as, uh, award engineering of this project to Nova Tech and utilize the twenty-twenty-four operating budget. And if necessary, Spencerville wastewater reserves ninety-eight dash thirty-eight oh six to fund expenses in twenty-twenty-four. I need a mover. So move. Need, so mover, second there. Um, further discussion. Hearing none, then I'll move, uh, the question. All in favor?
Good.
All right, stop up and close, convey unopened road allowance for thirty-five, uh, Frederick Street. I'm gonna, I'll bring it to staff and then we'll, I think I'm gonna ask, I think I'm gonna ask for more time on this one, but let's bring it forward and.
Uh, through the chair, I'll, I'll pass to, uh.
Oh, Dave speaking, okay. Do you all? Or Chris, sorry.
Thank you through the chair. So this action I had was to bring forward a request for stopping down, closing and conveying several unopened allowances. So on August fourteen, twenty twenty-four, an un- unopened allowance closure proposal was received from Tom and Sherry Barney Rumber. Um, so their request is, those remaining of Forest Street to the east side of block ten, uh, fourth. Those remaining of Queen between third and fourth street. Those remaining of King Street between second and fourth. Those George Street between second and fourth street. Those turn from the east side of block sixteen, third, north south to Queen, to the Queen Charlotte Street. So a bylaw would be required to, to stop up, close and convey the requested unopened road allowances. The bylaw and our plan would then be registered and land transfer completed. So a new art plan, uh, would be, have to be created, a pin would be to be completed. Uh, the both closures, uh, do not appear to land lock or restrict access to privately owned property. And she can be, be her council being, it's an orderly proposal, a notice of intent. Uh, intending conveyances will be publicized. Uh, strategic plan implications aligns with economic development and growth, pillars supporting agriculture and housing. And also the conveyance, including survey and legal, will be absorbed by the applicant. The applicant is aware of the required, requirement to cover all the costs. Are there any questions?
I have, I probably have several, um, but I'll leave it to committee first, so.
Sure, like, we'll go first again, for some. Um, I'm, uh, so, some of these didn't bother me as much as Fourth Street, um, to the east, including the bridge, I guess. That was actually with their little, little bridge there, I guess, would be, would be closed off as well, and, and therefore essentially permanently barring access to have that, that access in case it was ever needed for downward any growth that happened or anything like that. So I'm concerned about that, to be honest, and then it's not, the question for you, Chris, it's more of a, a statement that, you know, if development in that area happens and, and there's a need for traffic flow to be able to go out that way as well, I'd be concerned that we do something there about that one, so I'm, I'm, I'm a little reserved on this at this point in time, so. But otherwise, everything else didn't seem to really bother me. I mean, it was, you know, it's all seems to be areas that, uh, that is their property essentially, and it's, 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 uh, not really an objection to that, I think, but that one there is a little bit on the, on my concern list, so.
Yeah, I share some of the same concerns for the same particular, so.
Oh, yeah, you hit me. So, this is as long as I understand. If we go along with this Queen Street and George Street and King Street to these people, do they own it? And, and does it mean five years down the road, we want to open Queen Street all the way up from up above to our park to four sixteen? Can we still do that? Uh, duly chaired to maybe the, to the, uh, Chris, or to the, uh, operation manager?
I think through the, through the chair, I, if, if I, if I may, um, if you were to stop up, close and convey those road allowances, there would no longer be road allowances. That would just, uh, uh, merge in with the, uh.
Property owner? Thank you.
If, if, if I may, if you recall a couple of years ago, my twenty-four, twenty-six Queen Street with that, uh, stop up, close and convey portion, that's the other side of where that bridge would have, would, would, would have been, so it's already that road is already closed and stopped and, and conveyed.
So where is that in relation to to the maps we have in front of us? Is that zero, eight, nine, three? I guess I'm looking on page twenty-three or forty-five.
Uh, I would say that that is, uh, sort of the intersection of zero, one, eight, four and zero, eight, nine, three.
So that's already, so that's already taken away?
Well, there weren't, there, there would have been, there would, there, there would have been an, uh, an, an airplane created for that small little piece, uh, 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 that, uh, lots up against, uh, Queen Street.
Say that again, sorry, I didn't understand what you said, Dave.
Um, so you're looking on, if you're on page twenty-eight or fifty, you're.
Twenty-three or twenty-five, I, or twenty-three or forty-five, I was.
That's the old agenda.
You're on the right.
Yeah, I think, I think we're on the right one, okay? It's indicated as zero.
So what you, so what you'll see highlighted, just to make sure that we're kind of on the same reference point, we see zero, one, seven, nine?
Yeah.
Highlighted. Shaded out with red, red or?
Uh-huh.
Okay. So if you're looking where zero, one, eight, four and zero, eight, nine, three, uh, sort of intersect. Yeah, that, that, that is sort of where we cross the, the Johnstown Creek. On the east side of, of, of that, uh, of, of the Johnstown Creek, that would have been, um, stopped up, um, am I just trying to, would it have been two years? Maybe, maybe, maybe no idea. Year and, year and a half, two years ago, uh.
So Queen Street, we ca- we could not do anything with that? Is that what you're telling me? If we want to go, uh, expand that to four sixteen?
Uh, straight through, well, it's, uh, I, I would say, no, you couldn't because you're, you're already sort of Queen and Charlotte because you've already, you've already veered over into Charlotte because Queen is.
Okay. I guess it's.
Doesn't make any sense.
No, because I can't find Charlotte, but getting to my point, I guess, coming back, if we allow this, we have no recourse to open up from our industrial park to four sixteen? By the looks of it. In other words, if we want to expand sometime down the road or try to get the bypass, um, number two and take pressure off the highway number two block to the industrial park, is there any way we can do that in that chunk?
On the, on the lower half, I would say, no, you would only need to be looking at something like Fifth Street or, or, or Fire River. For a crossroad. That's what you, that's what you're looking for.
Right. So is is, does Fifth Run east and west? Yes. Right?
Correct.
And it, is it further than they say the one-five R-six-two-nine-nine? Is it further north than this map show me?
Uh, Fifth Street, uh, would be on, on that page if you're, you're looking at zero, one, seven, nine, that's shaded.
There was. Yeah.
If you, if you, if you look sort of, when I would consider north of that.
But did you, what did, what?
You'll see zero, one, zero, nine.
Okay.
You see that?
No. Direct. Oh, yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And then keep going toward what I would consider north. Your Fifth Street is, uh, registered plan six.
Okay, so, so it is possible that we can expand, but that'd be our only one, is Fifth Street?
That is correct, it does for the most, well, for the, for the, for the most part, uh, Fourth Street from Frederick to, um, past King has already been closed, stocked up and conveyed, uh, to, um, to the landowner, um. And then nineteen ninety, would you say, probably nineteen ninety, what do you think was the, uh, bylaw?
Yes, well, don't go back that far, so.
Sorry, bylaw ninety-four twenty-seven.
Right, is that, so Fifth Street's our only option to expand? It's, that's all I want to know. Can we expand down the road if anything happens to four sixteen in our industrial park? Is it possible?
Are we looking more upwards of the tracks?
Yeah, well, that's Fifth Street.
I think with respect to access to the industrial park would be probably that Frederick Street rail crossing to the, to, to, to the north to, to go sort of south into the industrial park from the four sixteen sort of area.
To go, okay, so can we?
One would think.
Yeah.
A- as opposed to trying to maneuver down too, too, too close to, you know, your own two.
No, I want to take that away, yeah. So, so what they're asking, it's not gonna affect us?
Uh, I, I would certainly say for the, a, a number of the, um, closures that they're asking for, um, on, on, on a couple of them, there's already development that has been there for probably forty years at, at the time. Um, so certainly, I look at some of this as, um, cleanup and, and reducing liability for the township with respect to unopened road allowances. I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure it's, um, necessarily, um, going to negatively impact future plans at this, at, at this time, but obviously that's not for, for me to decide, that's why I'm bringing the, uh, the request forward.
Just don't feel warm and funny, but I mean, but there is a recommendation that's attached to it, though, that we do it, right? So, so I think we're asking, we're asking for the justification for the recommendation, that's all.
Yeah. And, and, and the justification is, uh, cleaning up a number of these, um, small, um, one-offs where you look at, for instance, um, zero, one, seven, nine as the example. It does not actually attach the pin zero, eight, nine, three. So it's already part of the, the property ownership of those pieces, so. You, you're not, you, you don't have straight through connections on, on a number of these, uh, particular items. Um King Street. For instance, there's a there's a block uh in between where um King Street. Uh where it has registered plan six, King Street, there's a there's a gap that. The property owner already already has before the other portion of that. Um unopened road allowance begins. So. So some of it in 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 order to make the gains, um would it be possible to open up some of these unopened road allowances and connect? Um I guess. Long and short of it is would be yes, but it would probably be through like. An aggressive, in this case, where it's expropriation as opposed to, right? Because you're going to need pe- pieces and portions of of that land. You you don't have, you don't have the full connections of those.
Yeah.
So I'm I'm looking at just the satellite image, okay, just to see what's out there. And you know, when you look at sort of. Uh Fifth Avenue or sorry, Fifth Street and Sixth Street. They're just road allowances. Um you know, Sixth Street has a little section, I guess, from Charlotte to Highway sixteen. Fifth Street is entirely on the other side of sixteen. There's nothing on this side of on the on the west side of sixteen. Um at all, it's a road unless it's really hidden well in here. And then Fourth Street, like I said, keep keep coming to Fourth Street as, you know, yes, it's a bit roundabout, if you will, but. Fourth Street kind of leads right into Queen Street, which semi becomes Charlotte Street, which allows for us to have that possibility of, then I mean. That's the one that I see that, you know, I don't want to lose that ability at this point in time. Uh for that one until we know that we have something we're going to do with, say, a Fifth Street or a Sixth Street, uh if that becomes a reality down the road. And so that's that's still my concern about that one. The rest of them, I don't think I have an objection to, you know, to the Queen Street becomes. Charlotte Street pretty naturally already anyway, so I'm not concerned about that. But where where they where they merge, but um you know, I'm really concerned with the Fourth Street aspect of this recommendation still at this point.
Just thanks, Chris. Uh I. I'm look, I'm doing much like what Chris is and I'm using Google Earth and trying to figure out where we are on the map. So. So the furthest north is is where the where the road turns at the to the right of it would be CBSA. Or. Am I right in thinking that?
Yeah, sort of north, the northeast issue.
Like to the right of, there's a, there's a. Well, I suppose you you're not looking at the same thing I'm looking at. So I guess my my question would be the the land that we're talking about and when we did our new official plan. And we're looking at it in the official plan. This land is still designated as rural, rural land, right? It doesn't have, doesn't have. And it's not part of what we were considering future industrial.
That is, that is correct.
The only.
It is it is outside of the uh area that was considered as a a future industrial.
Right. So if it is going to be developed, it is, well, I mean, it's potentially to be developed anyway, but but it would be more residential uses, likelihoods.
Uh that potential would exist, yes.
And if we were building a road into. I mean, what the official plan says, not saying that we have any plan for an industrial park, but the official plan indicates it as development lands, it would be further north, wouldn't it? If we were making a road or a connection?
Uh I would say if you were going to make a a a road or a connection into the industrial park, I would say you want that in the north. As opposed to uh to or even close to the to County Road two and trying to cross over in 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 the residential. Or potential residential area.
Okay, and yeah, and my last question is, and and I don't think it's these these pieces. But for a while, we were. Maybe leasing some of the road allowances to certain owners so that they could be used for agricultural purposes? Are any of these potentially those?
The portion that would have been, no, they would not, they they would not have encountered the uh at least agreement that we had on the. Uh I don't think we know since those particular ones. Because we were looking at the ones uh to the west of uh of Frederick Street, not not east of Frederick Street.
Okay, all right, all right. And yeah, okay, and Frederick Bridge and then left of that towards the industrial park. Yeah, okay.
Correct.
All right.
Yes, the future industrial park uh area. We 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 would have had the area surveyed. The west, west of Frederick Street.
I think I echo, you know, I do echo some of the concerns that that um. That the group has with with worrying about closing off this portion, this portion of the road. I just don't see that that would be the portion of the where we would create a road that would connect over to. To four sixteen. I'm not an engineer by any means. I I don't know about the proximity to the four oh one or any of those. Relationships. I don't want to limit what our abilities are. That that's just where I I struggle with. And you know, there is always the potential that, you know, the highway two is. Limited with, you know, it does have a lot of transport use and and potentially at some point, if. The industrial park continues to develop the the way that it is, there may have to be a different access point. Um put in. I'm just worried that we may limit, you know. With proximity to the rail line that goes there and and with the four sixteen interchange. Or the, excuse me, the four oh one interchange, not the four sixteen interchange. I just worry about those those proximities, especially with expansion talks and things like that. I mean, I. I don't know if we're within the distances that we would need. That we would need, but before I made that, like for me, I think before I made that decision, I'd like to know. Like to know what those di- those distances are so that we don't, I mean, if we do this and it's our only option to connect at some point. I mean, that that could be limiting for the park. Yes. Sorry, yes.
Um if you go to page thirty, uh you see the picture all the blue. Is that showing indicating that's all the road allowances?
Through through the chair, that that is the uh that 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 is the request. Yes, the blue is showing the 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 road allowances that they're looking to. That have conveyed.
So can you explain to me what the the house in the middle of the square?
Uh I I certainly, I I can, I can certainly attempt. Um ob- obviously, the uh the 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 owner that that's making the request. May see in the future that if they uh if they have the uh. Most unopened road allowances conveyed, that they may be looking at the at at putting home at that location. They're just sort of indicating. Where they 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 might see a uh their future home.
So one more question.
Uh just for clarity on the the comment that was just received, it's not where the existing barn already is, though, right?
That is, that 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 is correct. If you look at. You're on that page. If you look down, you can see the large barn where um.
So the, I'm looking at the one that's a Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry map.
Correct.
Um in the old package, it was twenty six of forty five, so it's the.
Probably thirty.
About the fourth picture.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
In the one blue line, there's obviously an existing building.
Correct. That would be uh the barn.
So road road allowance goes through a barn?
One barn on top of the uh unopened road allowance.
Yeah, it seems like it's cleaning some stuff up for sure. Sorry.
No, no, no.
I feel like this is a Bugs Bunny episode.
I think I think you just go to the previous page, twenty nine and fifty. I'm wondering if that might help. It sort of indicates where Charlotte Road is or Charlotte Street. Uh and Queen Street and 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 some of those areas. So if you if you look at Fourth Street, like if you were going to do Charlotte. Or or even let's say Queen, and you get up to Fourth Street and you go west on Fourth Street. You're not even going to get to Frederick Street.
You're stuck anyway.
It's it's of no value because that's where the that's where the unopened road ends. It's like it's already been, it's already been conveyed. Um most likely decades ago. So I'm just like I'm looking at uh the highlighted. And in this particular map is 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 zero one eight zero, right? So zero one eight zero and and zero one seven nine don't serve any purpose. Because they don't they don't act. So so to me, like, that's part of the reason where, yeah, it makes some sense to do some cleanup. Fourth Street probably makes some sense to do some cleanup because it's only a portion. Now, um same with King Street, the one the one question or the one area that you may want. Uh to look at from a from from a future perspective, maybe maybe Third Street. Which is which is zero one eight.
Yeah, I struggle with the maps. Sorry.
Okay.
Zero one eight four is third. Yeah, okay, I see it. And so what, so is it one of the ones that's being asked?
It the.
I struggle, I gotta go back.
Zero one, zero one eight four is. But remembering that on the on the east side of. Of the Johnstown Creek, that's already been stocked up and made. All all of it would just clean up. What has happened on that.
Well, doesn't the Third Street one, isn't that the one that goes through the silo and part of the barn?
Uh yes, I I think that and King Street.
That's King Street?
I believe it is.
Because one five R eight nine seven five is were aggressive. And we needed it, we could have that. If we had that piece of property, we would connect that King Street all the way through.
So.
Pardon?
King King Street, County Road two has already been. Devated. You don't have, you you don't, you you don't have um access to King Street off of County Road two.
Not to County Road two, but it can, and and I'm not concerned about County Road two, it's four sixteen, though. When we have it on the on the lower end of four sixteen?
Well, King Street may have uh north of Fifth Street.
But these maps are confusing. I mean.
Yeah, I struggle with the maps, but.
I just thought that that fifteen nine eight nine seven five.
So King north of Fifth.
Yeah.
So we're but we're quite a bit sinful that then.
Yeah.
That's that that's one of the reasons why the recommendation is to clean some of this obstacles.
Yeah, but I mean, when you see a street with a barn going through it and a silo. Wow, and then you want to propose a new house on another.
For all the houses there. I just like, why is there a barn on our road? It's the first question, and it's not helping. I mean, Mr. I'm still, I don't know, I still look at. Fourth, and I know we're talking about, but I mean, it it's it's a road that I could travel my car on ninety percent of it right now, you know, um. Uh and and I don't know if that's a laneway, but it still says Fourth Street on the map here, so I'm assuming it's still a a township road, not not conveyed. So I'm really thinking that that's until we have another viable option that we know of, that one there gets us at least from Frederick. Uh to Queens slash Charlotte Street and um. I I I just I'm concerned about that one in particular. The rest of it.
Just hold for one second. Is that accurate?
Uh through the chair, that would be not correct. Third Street may be able to get you from Frederick to Charlotte. Fourth Street uh from Frederick to we'll call it King Street has been uh closed and conveyed. Some time ago. Actually, possibly before it was born. I'm I'm not sure.
So so going back then to to the third diagrammed. Satellite image, the one with the with the triangle for the proposed new home, the the violet colored outlaw that. Or uh outline that says by law ninety four twenty seven, so we're all on the same one.
Yeah.
So the that, I'm assuming that road that goes to that house is what Chris is talking about? Is that what he's referring to as Fourth Street?
Very well, maybe, because at one time that was Fourth Street before it was.
And so have it, has it been conveyed to the property owner already?
Yes, it was by law. I I believe it is by law ninety four twenty seven.
If you can access it.
No, that's that's fine. That's like I said, you know, we should tell Google as well because they have it as a road on here, but.
Do they?
Yeah, oh yes, it's Fourth Street, right? We can go to the maps, right off Frederick.
Interesting. I guess I'm looking at Google Earth, so. But it well, it looks like a road on Google Earth. You have a question?
If we close the roads, what does that person buy the land from us or what's the deal?
That's a good question for staff. So so there is a price attached with closing up and but it's not. But if we just, I think it's an open policy, right?
So so through that, so through the through the chair, it would be um typically what what we've done in 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 the past in those circumstances. Would be that they cover all the legal survey costs and due to the fact that that actually removes the liability from the township. Uh that, you know. If anybody's using that unopened road allowance, so so to speak, so there's usually not been an additional uh charge. It's just in covering. Covering the expenses of the township is 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 not in the pocket in any expense.
So the gentleman that's wanting this all closed, he's going to benefit from this. And we're not. Am I correct?
Well, liability and duly chaired too.
But we've had liability like since Jesus wore sandals, we've owned this in there.
Yeah.
So.
Wow.
So it's 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 a big decision, certainly, you know, there are there are options, but it may even take some time to 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 consider.
Yeah. And and that's a great, great suggestion, but let's let's um. Push it a little bit further. The bridge that's. I completely respect Jesus wearing sandals too. The the bylaw ninety four twenty seven part in in violet is a bridge, correct?
The chair, that uh appears that that's uh fairly accurate, yes.
Is it our bridge?
I I would have to acknowledge, I I I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, that was more, I was following up on the liability issue and and thinking that. If there's a a bridge there. I've never heard of it being there, so.
Your worship is that Frederick Street, it's just to the. Were you saying the bridge is when you come out to that white line, that's Frederick Street, is that correct?
Charlotte, I believe.
Charlotte on the right. That's Charlotte. Frederick Frederick's all the way around the left quite a bit.
Cause there is a bridge from Frederick going into that farm.
If you go down one, go down one more picture. Um okay, so then so then those same triangles and the same violet square or violet rectangle, it's the B in by law, right? So you see how if you go below it and then go to the left, you can follow it right out to Frederick Street.
Okay.
See where Frederick Street is now? See where Frederick Street is now? Okay, and it's hard to follow on the other one, so um. I think. I don't think there's a lot of comfort, I'm gonna look to the C A O for this one, so I I don't think there's a lot of comfort. At this point around the table with moving it forward, I don't know that there's. An end to saying we won't move it forward, but I get the sense that people wanna feel this out a little bit more and. And get a greater understanding and maybe even, you know, see. See these pieces a little bit better or what the possibility for play out is, it's kind of what I've heard around the table, there's. You know, development, potential development options, I wanna give them the ability to exhaust that. Uh before they feel they have to force a recommendation, I don't turn or. That there might, if I move the recommendation, I think. I think it might fail, actually, so so I'm not really, I don't really wanna ask to bring it forward, I think I'd rather allow allow committee a little bit of time.
Through the through the chair, uh the best way would be then to defer this to. The next uh meeting, but give staff direction on what. Uh historical pieces you would want. Bring forward to provide context.
Okay, so they've they've have they filled? There's new laws, is there a requirement that they've made an application?
Through the chair, I'm. Director of Operations, have they made a?
Cause we have to deal with planning matters, there's new rules in place, right, Bill, whatever, one twenty four, whatever it was where we have to. If we've had an application in front of us, we have to process it in a certain amount of time. Like they're talking about building a new house.
So. Yeah, it through the chair, it's unfortunate that they weren't cleaning a triangle for a proposed key around, there is no. Obviously, there's no plan because they don't own that. It's on a it's on an unopened road allowance. I think that would be signaling what their future plans may be, if they if they obtain ownership.
They owned it, okay.
So there's no no firing need to expedite a process here to get to get things rolling, we're not against. A timeframe to get it done. So one meeting, two meetings. Really, okay, so so. To help. So staff needs direction then on what we would like. What would help us make the decision, that's. What you're asking us for. Right, to help make that easier, for me, I think, and I think for me, it's just more time to absorb this and to actually understand it. But I'd like to hear what everybody else says uh on that, I I think that. There's some lack of clarity in the diagrams and the maps, like, I'm not sure that there's an easier way to make it. Make it really clear. Um but I think going to the area again and having a quick look at it will probably make my decision for me, but.
And and you know, personally, at least, I'd like to see if we're, you know, if we're saying forth is is not the not the answer. I'd like to see some evidence that we have a mostly contiguous. Stretch of land for highway for uh for for for, you know, Fifth Street or Sixth Street that gets us potentially to. Uh Highway sixteen from uh from the the business park or from Frederick and beyond Frederick Avenue as well, so if we could have that. That'll give me more comfort than we have that as an option, but I I would also follow up with the M T O rules, you know, where we can put an intersection because. Coming out of the off the off the bridge there, it's a pretty long hill, so you never know where we can actually connect on to it, so I'd be. That's where I keep thinking Charlotte might be the answer, which is why I think we have to find a way to tie those two together at some point.
An M T O discussion about this and the idea of us ever being able to. To attach there. Right, I mean, realistically, I may finish the discussion really, I get that it has value to us, but that's percept perceptual value, I. You know, I know. Especially with road widening and and you're right, there is quite a quite a hill and a curve.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the emergency plan as well, I mean, if if need be, if there was ever an emergency where something was was going wrong there. And and exit through there, meaning where there's already paved and a gate in front of it, that might have to be open to allow a special situation to happen by the O P P or something, could be possible. But not if you don't have access to that road, really, so. Exactly, what I'm saying is it's already there, if need be, if there was some sort of an urgency on Highway two, people had to divert around there. Going up to Fifth Street or Fourth Street or whatever street and be able to get onto Charlotte and going that way with with. You know, special supervision, O P P or whatever, if you require, it gives you an act gives you an extra. You know, we talked about it, we were like, which should we cardinal, for instance, we need to be able to have an access, a secondary access to exit from, it could be there. But not if we can't get to it, and that's where I'm really thinking that.
Are we saying that there is that style of access right now, though?
There is, there is, yeah, yeah.
It was every emergency going across.
Yeah, through the through the chair, the port also puts that up for. Um if anybody has cargo that won't fit on the bridge. They can use that as bypass.
That's up which street, though?
Queen.
Queen, where Queen and Charlotte is, there's a little connector that has a gate on.
Right, to the to the right of it, and then it goes on to C B S A property, correct?
Correct.
Right, but but we're not limiting the ability to do that, are we?
No.
No, but but don't forget, you know, Queens Street goes down Highway County Road two. But, you know, if ever we needed, if there was a problem, you know, on County Road two. Before Queen Street, diverting traffic wouldn't be possible, that's all I'm saying without that, right, and just, you know, it's one of the safety measures, but more importantly, I think there's gotta be a way to get. You know, more more, you know, more access to Queen Street as well.
Well, if you're suggesting we divert them up Frederick Street, where would they go, though? If they went up Frederick?
No, let's just say it was an accident, you know, at County Road two near near the inn, okay, for instance, something that was blocking the road. And there was a possibility to divert from Frederick Street up and across. That's all I'm saying, is that option there could exist if we had access to, you know, to Charlotte slash. Queen Street from there as well, if there was a crossroad up there, I'm not like that. Just a concern, I haven't, you never know if a development happens, if suddenly there's a bunch of residential up there. You know, we're limiting ourselves on the roadways we have, again, if we don't do something there potentially.
Well, all right, I I think I'm I'm, again, we can, I think we can do this all night, I gotta go home and I gotta look at this and I gotta look at it, that. I think it's a perfect example, cause in my mind, we're not eliminating anything because. Because we can't access it now, and in an emergency situation, it's not ours, so we couldn't access it anyway. But I would have to go and see it and try to run that through my my brain to whether that's accurate.
So through the through the chair then is, will there be any other information or is it just time?
Time, I think we need M T O, I think we need a comment from M T O on it, like. You know, um between C B S A point and. And four oh one, like, is there, would there be a suitable place for an access point? Right, cause I mean, ultimately, that's what we're talking about, that that's our concern, we don't wanna. Remove the potential for that if. If we can, but we don't even know that it's that it's even a possibility, I think M T O could solve that question pretty fast.
So so through the chair, um recommendation would then be to to defer until. Uh comment from M T O on uh.
Yeah.
How they can access sixteen through the fifth or sixth street.
If there is potential to. Yeah, cause I I think that and that process could take a while, I'm gonna guess. So, right, I don't think they're gonna have an answer overnight for you for that, but. I mean. If that's what most of the discussion seems to be revolving around is emergency access point or. Or the potential for future industrial development, so. Otherwise. I don't know, I struggle to see the value of it, but. If there is, if there is value to connect them, then absolutely, but. It's a jigsaw puzzle. We'd have to take a barn down and a silo down, like for Third Street. No, 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 and I I but I we have to get that, get that through our heads, I think, I do anyway. Okay, so I need a mover for that recommendation. Seconded by Waddy, so further discussion. Okay, seeing hearing none, all in favor? Okay, good, done, all right. Well, I thought this was gonna be a quick one tonight. Uh eight D. Uh body worn camera policy. Uh and to the clerk, are you this one, bringing this one, okay?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Um this was recently proposed, um after discussing with. The Privacy Commissioners Office of Canada, Privacy Commissioner of Ontario. Um County Legal, along with other municipalities. Uh in cities that have implemented similar policies, um after they've had discussions with I P C. Um where our bylaw enforcement officer over the last couple of years has has had um some. Confrontational, a couple of dangerous, as well as. Uh been under scrutiny or debate um with various individuals that he's come into contact with. Um for bylaw enforcement matters, ranging from things simple as clean yards to property standards, the. Animal control, it depends on what cases. Um so we proposed this concept with a purchase of a camera, um. To try to protect both the bylaw enforcement officer. As well as public for accountability and transparency sake. Um this would assist the bylaw officer to complete more fair investigations if there is any allegations against the individual. Um there's been a couple of times where O P P have been attendance for a couple of calls where we knew it was gonna be contentious. And those covered us for future um. Allegations and litigations because of the O P P having those body worn cameras already in place and it covered us. Um so it's becoming more prevalent in cities and some municipalities where there has been ongoing concerns and complaints. So this is just kind of a day to day covered tactics. Um for off chance encounters. Um. It has been embedded through our legal and the policies based on legal opinion, as well as the I P C's um. Collection of policies that they have reviewed with other municipalities. It's before you tonight, doesn't have to be made a decision tonight, it is a big policy with a lot of legal jargon. Um unfortunately, I can't avoid a lot of that due to I P C and legal recommendations. Um to cover us if something goes to court or if something is challenged or something um gets reviewed with. And F I P A. But it's just something to consider, we haven't put a lot of money into it at this point, but we are able to. Um build out and trial it, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. It's just to try to protect our bylaw enforcement officer and also assist him for future court appearances or any challenges that we may face.
Thank you. I'm gonna open it to questions first.
Uh through the chair, do we have a rough cost on this trial?
Uh the camera was purchased earlier this year, uh we just did a. Very economical camera at this point until we get forward movement on this. Um it was, I wanna say, two, three hundred dollars. Um around there, I purchased it a couple of months ago, if this does. It's implemented, we will have to consider storage costs for cloud space. Um I'm working with our I T department right now to try and figure out costs, it's a catch twenty two because we can't really determine. How much storage space it could potentially use over a month or over a year, because we can't do recordings yet. But the camera itself is very low cost, if we continue with it and it is working out. In a couple of years, we may consider upgrading the camera to something that's more user friendly and easier access. But that would be a future consideration down the road, that's not anywhere in twenty twenty five budget or twenty twenty four budget.
Just. Can I jump in on one sec?
Absolutely.
I just wanna be clear on this, we've bought a camera, we're not using it, though, correct?
Go ahead. So uh through the chair, we. We can do this legally, we don't have to inform people, we're recording them when we walk in their houses.
Through the chair, there are requirements built into the policy, um that's recommended. From I P C that we do inform the individuals and there are restrictions on where it can be reported, as well as um. Clauses within the policy to stop recording for certain sensitive incidents. To protect the privacy of individuals or other sensitive topics. But there are overriding factors for saying bylaw enforcement officer, so if he's getting threatened, then he would keep the recording going. You know, if he's being threatened with law or with harm, then. It's to cover us and then protect him. Where we have had those instances where the police have been involved and it's covered us.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'm all for it. But it's admissible in court, right? By law officer, there's a lot of bad people that are treating that very nice.
I think it's a great idea, I mean, I think it's good for for the township as well, it's gonna, you know, help the thing, potential litigation. And I think it's good for for the bylaw officer, so she like safety, as well as the other individuals too, you know, I mean, it's just, it just makes sense all the way around.
Well, we got the camera, Bob. So we're here to give permission to put it on. Pretty much, and what did our legal say? Good idea, helps their liability.
Through the chair, we drafted the policy or legal reviewed it, he's done, our our legal counsel has done many of these for other municipalities. He tweaked it and supports it.
One more, Mr. Merritt?
Can I jump in just on the point that was just made? What other municipalities?
Through the chair, I did not specific ones.
Like, cause I haven't heard of a bylaw officer wearing a camera, that's, like, I'm struggling to think we need a camera in Edwardsburg, Colonel.
Through the chair, I can cover the basis with our legal to see which ones in this local area they use.
That was my question, what local. Municipality bylaw is wearing them, like, is Prescott, is Alibiditley, is uh Sevendongas? Whatever, City of Cornwall, City of Rockfall, I don't know, I just wanna, I I hate that. I I'm like you, Mr. Merritt, I just, I I hope we don't, it comes to that in our loaded community, but. If it does help and we do have one, another municipality has.
So I I I think through the through the, if if there are some words, I think. It has come to the community in some ways, right, we do get people who are threatening the bylaw officer, for instance, and things like that, so. You know, I mean, from the safety of the bylaw officer itself. I can see now that how that 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 helps and that protects us as well, protects 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 him, him slash her, and everyone who knows, doing the job as well. Um you know, I do worry a little bit about the, you know, turning it on, turning it off, and then. You know, what happens if he doesn't turn it off when they go to turn it off, even though it wasn't necessarily in a, you know, there's things like that that I little worry about. From the legality perspective there and what that what that implies. Um but I mean, I guess if it's recorded, then I want you to turn that off, and there was nothing altercation, whereas I think they could throw that out of evidence, but I'm not lawyer, so I don't know. But I just, you know, I I I can see it from the safety perspective, and it's also probably good for documenting as you're walking around and seeing some of the things the bylaw officer sees, somebody has that. Capture the picture as well, but uh. So I don't have a lot of direction, it is like to the deputy mayor's point, it's unfortunate that we're coming to this point, but. You know, unfortunately, we're here because, you know, we're not having the conversation because it hasn't happened already, and I concerns about it, so, but that's all I gotta say about that, it's. It's it's unfortunate that it has to happen, but I think that uh, you know, as long as you make sure that we're well protected, I'm okay with it happening.
Yeah, I uh I think, I guess, in in my mind, I I do I do struggle and I certainly. Support the safety, safety seems to be. You know, the utmost. We certainly want our staff to feel safe as well, not just be safe, but to actually feel safe and. You know, uh councillor Smale said he was, you know, former bylaw officer, he's been yelled at, I I certainly. Understand sometimes when you're going into those situations that you have to exercise that judgment of, you know, when to back up. When to, when to call the O P P and sometimes maybe you don't have that opportunity. But I just, like, I don't know, I I guess I maybe I live in this naive world, but. I I do struggle to think that. I certainly haven't heard of it being an issue around around us, I certainly know we have. Uh some repeat offenders that, you know, that um John goes to, but. At the same time, our bylaw officer isn't a police officer. Right, he. He's not to the point where he should be going somewhere if he needs the help of lawyers, that that, I mean, that comes with judgment and. And training, I think, on his behalf. Um I guess in my mind, I'm I'm thinking that he goes to, you know, uh where it was no mo may. To give out a citation for no mo may and and then, you know, it turns into an altercation where he asked you to turn on his body camera, I. I struggle to think that we live in it, that that's a needed. that that's a needed, a needed thing, but that's not about safety, I at least I don't think it is. I don't know, when I read this, when I was like, how was this even possible? But I, and I get that there's a lot of support for it around the table, I'm just not gonna be one of those ones that that supports this one, so um, while I think staff deserves to work and live in a safe place, I'm I think that that safe place is provided by police and and certainly, if John's a a great, or bylaw officer, sorry, I would keep using his name. Is a, is a, you know, he's a, he has a great judgment, he he knows how to use his judgment and I I struggle to think that anyways, that's my two cents, so, there is a recommendation with it, it's a long policy for sure. I've, I've read through it once, I went back and I reread a couple of things again as well and I, again, I I struggle to think that every time that the bylaw officer goes out there, he's gonna understand and know every requirement under the, there's such an extensive policy and how it's going to apply to what what he does, I actually see it as a potential issue, more than, more than safety. But, not one person at a table, so if the motion is there, it certainly needs a mover in this, in the second or if it's going to go through. Or or if people wanted, again, I I'm not on the defer bus tonight, but if people wanna do a little more thought, I guess it would have to come back at council anyways, correct? To actually go through, so even if it did go through tonight, we would have a couple of weeks to make sure and we could still make recommendations and dietations and changes at councils, should should that it's just approval of committee, so but it still has to move forward, so, and I feel, I feel like there is support around the table for it, so I just am one of the ones that's not.
Through the chair, if it increases the comfort level of yourself and other the members, I can reach out again to our legal to see and confirm which ones he has worked with in other municipalities and organizations. To my knowledge, I haven't reached out to other local municipalities, every municipality deals with these things differently. This was something that our bylaw officer made suggestion, like did research and came up with this with our legal and other factors. Um, so I can do some background work and see where I can get with it for other municipalities, I know there's a lot, pretty much every large city in Ontario and in other places across the country have utilized these for a couple of years now. Um, smaller municipalities are just starting to get into this.
It feels big city to me, but and and it feels like big city issues to me as well, but but again, that's, maybe it's mine, I I have any that feels that way, I don't know that there's anything that's gonna make me feel a a hundred percent comfortable, other than if our bylaw officer believes honestly that that it makes him feel safer in doing his job, that'll provide me the comfort that I'll need to support it, I just it'll be a pinch noser for me, so anyways, there is a recommendation, it's quarter to nine, I wanna keep this going, so unless there's further conversation, I need somebody to move it so we can get on.
I would like to move the recommendation, please.
Okay, thank you, secondor?
I'll second it.
Okay, and then further discussion?
Oh, through you, Mr. Mayor, the only con I'm hearing and I agree with it is that, you know, it's a shame we had to get to this point, but the pros are completely outweighing that, if you could throw another con on the table to convince me we don't need to do this, I'd listen, but I'm not hearing it.
Yep, that's, point, point all taken, I'll I'll do my best to try to get there, educate myself over the next couple of years, I don't know if I'll get there. Further, anyone? Everybody's good, all right, I'll call a question, all in favor? All right, where are we next? This should be a clapper. Uh, item E, which is, I think that's a light pedestrian crossing. And, Chris, sorry?
The signature is actually to propose a three lane lane push button pedestrian crossing being approved for inclusion into the twenty twenty five budget. Uh, there have been safety concerns raised. Regarding main crosswalks on, uh, County Road Two and Cardinal, Dishaw Street and Shanley Road. Uh, most recently was raised under councillor inquiries of the August twenty-sixth council meeting. Uh, for several years now, continuous flashing LED pedestrian sign has been in operation as a warning to drivers to attention of pedestrians crossing Dishaw Street intersection. The concept and theory were good to start, however, over time, continuous flashing uh, lights loses its effect and goes relatively unnoticed. Uh, staff reached out to ECF Electric to install the lane light pedestrian crossings in Prescott to the change price for installing the same unit at County Road Two Crossing at Dishaw Street and Shanley Road. This unit has additional flashing lights on the mast arms that were useful given the distance across County Road Two, especially Dishaw Street intersection. In addition, the crossing should be considered for, uh, considered for the intersection Bennett, County Road Forty-four and Henderson Street in Spencerville. Permission would need to be obtained to install the pedestrian crossings from United Counties of Wies and Ranville and suggesting at all suggested locations on county roads. The procurement policy bylaw twenty twenty twenty-three dash fifty-one states all expenditures shall be within the current approved budget or within approved estimates, otherwise, prior to approvals, council shall be required. Strategic plan implications aligns with the township commission to grow a safe, healthy community while providing sustainable services for all to enjoy. The cost of a unit and the installation is just under twenty-four thousand dollars per crossing. Based on previous conversations with United Counties of Wies and Ranville, installations and ongoing maintenance costs would fall to the township excluding line painting. Installations can proceed in twenty twenty-four, covered through the federal works reserves. And increase the transfer into reserves in twenty twenty-five to replace the amount removed for the work.
I'll ask a couple of real quick ones. We're crossing United Counties Road in both instances. We're asking permission to do this. Are we asking the United Counties to do it? Or are we asking permission to do it ourselves? And the thought for me is that if we're asking, and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe I just don't understand the process. Wouldn't we ask the United Counties to put them on their road and that be their responsibility from a cost perspective?
So, to to the chair, uh, the cost could fall on the township because the township maintains sidewalks on county roads. So that would be part of the, I mean, a sidewalk. We're in the, in the realm of the sidewalks, it would be, it's, it falls under all sidewalks, pedestrians.
Interesting, thank you for the clarification, I always thought the county was responsible for putting in the crossing markers. Second would be, uh, it's been brought up a couple of times that there were, that there definitely were issues with with Dishaw and 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 potentially Shanley Road, that Walker Street also is is heavily trafficked. Um, especially going into, you know, the mall location, the coffee truck, the restaurant, the the little mall. Is there consideration to that location?
So, uh, to the chair, um Walker Street does have, uh, high traffic, many pedestrians, but to cross from the north side of County Road Two to the south side, there was no, basically landing spot at that location, if we were to put it heading to the west a little bit to the southern half of Walker Street, you're basically walking, walking into the road there. And then if we go across the street, we won't take any parking.
Hey, and I I completely understand that, I just recognize that utilization of the area, that's where people cross. And and I get that putting one at Dishaw's can help there and I help, and I get that putting one at at Shanley Road will will help, but those are both difficult areas, but the predominance of traffic that I see is at the end of Walker Street, and I don't think that people are gonna, you know, are gonna turn up Walker and walk along the the sidewalk, along the north side of Highway Two to cross at Dishaw or Shanley and back to the mall, I think there's still continue to go straight across. So, uh, while I respect that these are gonna go up, I'm just not sure that it's the right location, so or all of the right location, it seems better than nothing for sure. Doesn't sound right, so, okay, those are mine, sorry.
Uh, sure, thanks, did I understand, if I read this correctly, there there are three way, in other words, there are around three quarters of the road, did I hear that, is that I read that wrong, or is that what you're saying, these are systems are? Does does just cross one road or does it kinda cross like?
It is, so, two of them will cross County Road Two. One at Dishaw Street and one at Channel Road.
Right.
The third proposed is County Road Forty-four.
No, I thought, I was thinking each unit was a three way system, otherwise would cross, have one for Dishaw and then one for, or County Road Two, that's not the case, okay. So when we look at three systems, um, when you, you then, on top of that, the price on here is actually for two systems, though, right, not for three systems? Um, and otherwise, I kinda, I mean, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not walking around Cardinal that often and I suspect that the mayor has has uh, more, you know, in-depth knowledge, if you will, or more firsthand knowledge of that area, um, so I mean, I, you know, I think, uh uh, I think procurement is one aspect of this, the location, I'm hoping can be something that we do some sort of a study for down the road and say, which makes the most sense to be honest, but that's just my two cents.
Just, just wanna make sure that that I heard correct, cause I think you said the prices for two crossings, didn't you?
Yeah, so the forty-seven thousand.
Oh, forty-seven, I'm looking at the twenty-four and it says per crossing, so I was worried, yeah, okay, all right, so we're on the same page, okay. Uh, Steve?
Nope, um, so we're only getting two, but we want three, is that right? At twenty-four thousand each for budgets, right? So seventy, seventy thousand for three, is that right? Okay, two in Cardinal, one here in Spencerville, on Henderson, and County Road Forty-four, is that right?
So through, so so through the chair, uh, under the council inquiries we had talked about Dishaw Street as 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 one of those pedestrian crossings. You know, Sir Marcel mentioned about the Shanley Road and County Road Two, and certainly we had, we we had concerns that way. Um, so those were the two, um, prices that that I asked, uh, ACF to to provide. Um, however, um, the county and 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 township staff have met a few times with respect to the Bennett Street and Henderson, the, where, um uh, heading up the, the public school and requests have been made with respect to to one there, so that's why we we decided to add that in, if 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 there's interest in going forward with that, we might better um, uh, look at, uh, look at having three installed as opposed to having, having one installed and then uh, it will certainly generate, uh, the potential for more requests at 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 different locations, but I think, I think that those are 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 three essential locations.
I, I agree, I think I agree, hands down.
Were you done? I gotta give the other side a chance. You're done?
I'm done, yeah, no, go ahead.
Um, a hundred percent, I've I've heard this request through the chair, I've heard this from it predates the election.
Yep.
Yeah, kudos, this has a real spot, fantastic idea, thank you.
Nothing here.
No, Karen? No, I certainly strongly support this thing too. I just wish, I just wish it was the counties that was was responsible paying for it. Uh, it'd be nice to see the other nine, nine municipalities paying for something in our township. All right, so the recommendation, if I'm correct, is that committee recommends that council provide twenty twenty-five pre-budget approval and, uh, proceed with the coordination and installation of three uh, lane light push button pedestrian crossings at the above identified, uh, locations. So the installation would continue in twenty twenty-four, this is just pre-budget, we'll pay for it in twenty twenty-five.
Yes, through the, through, through the chair, uh, you know, depending on when the the exact timing is, if it's in lost domain we we may need to do a transfer from
Money well spent, all right, um, who wants, who want to move to your, your project, second by Chris Wood, uh, further discussion? Karen Dunn, all the question? Good, um, uh, it certainly carries, and just wanna say thank you to staff for this one, this one, I know.
Yes.
This one we've been waiting for and it's
That's great, especially that, uh Dishaw scares me.
Yeah, sure.
Not that we wouldn't take down this money.
No, I don't want anybody crying, crying foul about the next one, but but let's move on to item out. Which is the domestic, domestic foul in settlement areas, uh, discussion.
I'll take, I'll take this one, uh, through the chair.
You're not gonna duck out of it?
No, I'm not gonna duck out of this one.
So, uh, I guess with this one, there was a little bit of a misunderstanding as far as what was required here. I was under the assumption it was just an information item to come forward as to whether uh, domestic foul was allowed in the settlement areas, which it is not. And attached is the, uh the requirements for what is allowed in, um, Hamlet Residential, uh limited residential services agriculture or rural. Should we want to expand this to settlement areas, uh, we'll have to do a zoning bylaw amendment to, uh uh, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-seven to in- include that, but the, the the warning here is the you know, um, as far as being the fifteen meters from any well it might not be yards that will fit that requirement. So, um, if it will be allowed, the requirements have to be very strict because the potential damage to a well and potentially the water table for all the wells that are along that area is high, so there would have to be a lot of conditions met to to allow that. So, and we're talking about a, a minimum lot area of point four hectare, so basically one, one acre. So in settlement areas, that's not always possible. And and the front or exterior side yards as well. But, uh
Sorry.
But what we would then want out of this information item is is direction to, um draft what it might look like and bring it to community development, uh, for, um, discussion.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, no, I certainly I think I might have asked for this one too. We certainly understand that there are coops throughout the township and and, you know, lots of, lots of different areas. Um, meeting the requirements, not meeting the requirements, and certainly, um, I've been approached by many people that have moved in, uh, from, you know, outside the township into the township and are shocked that that we don't allow them, one couple from Toronto, uh, had a coop in their, in their yard in in Toronto, in a, in a small residential neighborhood, and they were shocked that they couldn't have one, uh, here, so certainly one of the reasons why I brought it forward, I understand that there are certainly issues that come along with it, the wells, the windows, you know, that that sort of thing, but I think from a, from a, you know, a if, I mean, if they can figure it out in Toronto, I'm sure we can figure it out early, how how we can allow them in, um, residential areas, it's more the process that, you know, I wanna make sure that we we go through, cause I think it would have to have a public meeting, it would have to go through you know, those changes, and we wanna make sure if we're going to do it, that we actually you know, get it right, I think we turned it down, I, in my mind, we I thought we approved it, uh, when we did this, the ZDL in twenty twenty-two, obviously we didn't, um I thought, for some reason in my mind, I thought we did.
We just allowed it.
Yeah, I I, like, I remember talking about one of the properties.
Especially when the COVID was here, everybody happy.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the least I worries, really.
So, so what do you, what do we need, like? What do you need from us as far as direction goes? I get the sense that there's pretty strong support for settlement area chicken coops.
Uh, through, through the chair, the, the direction would be to, um. Discuss with, with the planning department as to what changes would need to be made to, uh. Bylaw. Twenty twenty two dash thirty seven to what rate.
Yeah, how it could apply to settlement areas.
Yes.
Okay, alright, so does everybody understand that? Then that's more or less the direction I'm looking to, uh, to achieve with this?
Yeah, I, I'd like to. One step further, like to see what other municipalities have, I know that, uh, Augusta Township has one, a bylaw. Uh, self done that, so just like you get, there's, I'm not sure, but fifteen meters of the well. I mean, if you, that's forty five feet, and if you own a, an acre, not sure how many people have that. And. Is it really, if you have five chickens, we'll say, is it gonna affect if it's? Maybe eight meters, twenty four feet away from a well, or fifteen, I mean, I'm sure there are dogs. Lots of go around the well, look at fifteen meters, lots of dogs. You know, so I'm a little hesitant on that. If you can look at the. At the, uh, and, you know, hopefully we can have. Ten hens and two roosters.
But you're not gonna have any roosters.
Roosters, I'm only killing.
But, um, but I, but I do think though, in, 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 in response to that, there are bylaws. And we've just asked for, you know, uh, confirmation when it comes to body cameras, right? To help us shape our opinion based on what, you know, what the need is around us, and, and it makes sense to go and. And even read and see what, what is available, whether.
Other municipalities.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I just don't get the fifteen meters, like I said, it's gonna, it's gonna take about eighty percent of the people away.
Mm-hmm, they want. But we can also, we can also set that number though.
Exactly.
Right, yeah.
Well, and, and to that point though, I think that some, the ministry of, is, is gonna be responsible for telling us what's a safe distance from the well. For you, there, I think the fifteen meters is something we have in our bylaws, but it might not be the scientific actual number, right? So, so I think that's where you have to consult with MOE or MOX or MOX, we'll go with MO twenty X. Some ministry is gonna tell us what we can do with that well, right, and then so. I'd rather defer to the science, it's what the science says about that instead to the, to the mayor's part, deputy, deputy mayor's part, sort of that.
Sure.
They mean to promote them on a, so.
More money.
So, so, uh, so I, I think with regards to that, I mean, that, cause I mean, that, you know, I've had chickens myself, and I mean, uh, uh. They're fun, they're good for the family, they're also good for the neighbors, I mean, you know, visitors and stuff love them and stuff, and it, and it doesn't. With, without a rooster, it doesn't really cause a problem, in my experience, but. There will be some neighbors who don't love it, and there're gonna, there's gonna be more discussion about that, so, uh. Uh, but, you know, the, the reality is, I think that we should look into it deeper and see what can be changed to the mayor's point, right? So what, what is, what is allowed, you know?
Says you can have in Toronto.
So we don't, so, yeah, which makes Cardinal easy, but it doesn't necessarily make Johnstown and Spencerville easy, right? From that same perspective, because they don't have wells, right, so.
Yeah, 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 there's a water.
Yeah.
But, but I mean also, and I, and I believe, I. I struggle when common sense is part of a discussion, you know, do you really need to build a chicken coop over top of your well? Do you need government to tell you that you can't do that, like?
I know, built it around, you're right. But, but, go cover it.
Well, but, but, I mean, is that really?
That's why we're here though, right?
Is it? Pro chicken?
I'm a pro chicken.
Okay.
I just question through the merits of the CIO. Uh, when new extras class is a hamlet. There definitely yards aren't even half an acre. How many houses you have to have to be a hamlet?
It, it's a, a hamlet with exception. So there's, there's exceptions in there as well, right, so.
Is that because they have water lines instead of wells?
I think so, I, I'd have to check with, uh.
That was the only thing I could come up with, I'm thinking it must be because they have water lines.
So I, I'd have to check with mine.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious, that's all.
Karen?
No, I'm good for chickens, though.
You're good for chickens? Yeah. It sounds like there's a pretty good support for chickens. I know, I could, I'll have a joke coming, so.
I, I have no retort.
Good. I don't have to go wah-wah.
You're blocking it, bud?
Yeah. Um, so there's no recommendation, I do believe that there was consensus for direction, do you need a motion for that direction?
With the chair, you can put a motion forward, but we have pretty clear complaints that. We'll be going to the planner to see clarification on.
Well, we can, yeah, okay, and when can we expect us, we don't know, till we talk to the planner. Okay, so you'll keep us informed anyways, yeah, okay, good. Alright, inquiries notice a motion, anyone? Not for a while. Uh, Counselor Smale.
I have an inquiry, I'd like to propose a motion for, uh. Next year, I'd like to see, uh, lights put in on the dam and Spencerville, to put it in the budget for discussion.
Do we own the dam? So, so, so we're looking at.
Well, I've seen them through everywhere across the world, they're just like the rainbow lights, sort of like, they get red, green, blue, yellow.
Talking like Niagara Falls, you know, how they project light onto the cascade of water.
Okay, so you want to, you want to have a discussion about that?
Yeah.
Or you want to have that as a, as a budget discussion?
Yeah. Uh, see how.
I have no issue with putting it in for a budget discussion.
The chair, I, hopefully the order is the, uh, mill society owns. Like that part where the dam is or where we could hook that up, but.
Let's have a chat about it and, at, at budget time and see if it makes it through, uh. Through a budget cycle, and then we can worry about maybe the house afterwards.
Sure.
Yeah. Good, anymore? Good, alright, moving on then to mayor's report, I don't really have a report, um. Uh, this week, uh, I do. With sadness, want to, um, uh. Wish condolences to the family of Ray Calery, who was our CIO. Um, up until a couple of weeks ago at, um, at United Counties, he, um. He passed today, um, from, from a battle, uh, an ongoing battle with, uh, with cancer. And I just, you know, want to have everyone keep Ray and Ray's family, uh, and their thoughts and, and their prayers, and. And I'll leave the report at that, um. We. When there's more information available, will you share it with, with council if there's arrangements and?
With the chair, yes.
And make sure that we.
When the communication goes out, I'll make sure council.
Okay. Yeah. Yes, uh, okay, and question period, no question, nobody here. Um, nobody online questions at all from Veronica. Um, and so then we must have a, so I don't have it on my paper, do we have a motion to go into closed session? Somebody must have one, there's, I see a motive there.
That's Chloe, it's when it's, I do, you're sorry, worship.
Okay, can you bring the motion to go into closed session forward?
Move by myself, seconded by Joe Martell, the meeting proceeds into closed session at, uh.
Nine oh nine.
Nine oh nine P M. In order to address matters pertaining to A, section two, three, nine, two, B, personal matters about a. Identify individual including municipal or local board employees specifically approved minutes to close session dated June tenth, twenty twenty four. B, section two, three, nine, two, C, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of. Land by the municipality or board, local board, specifically Edwardard Cardinal Land Bank. C, section two, three, nine, two, C, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality. Or local board specifically buyer's road property.
Good. Okay, alright, questions before we go into closed? None then, I'll call the question, I'm going into closed, all in favor? Okay, we're in closed session, we'll take a five or seven minute break to clear the chamber for everybody. Alright, so somebody should have a motion. To bring us back into, it should be Wadi, right, that has the motion to bring us back out of closed session and into open session.
That's correct, your worship, thank you very much, uh, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Joe Martell, that the closed. Meeting of committee is now adjourned and. The open meeting is now resumed at nine forty two P M.
Okay, call the question then, I'm coming back into open session from closed, all in favor? Okay, and coming out, do I do my report out at the beginning, I always move this up, my report out is after we approve the minutes, right?
Sure, you can do it either way technically, if you want to report out on the following and then ask that.
Okay, I'll do it at the end. Yeah, I'll do it at the end, so then reporting out of closed session, uh, council met, uh, under section two, thirty nine, two, C, uh, to discuss. Um, and, or excuse me, to receive information regarding, uh, proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. By the municipality or local board specifically, the, uh, uh, Edwardsburg Cardinal Land Bank. We received information and we gave staff direction. Um, we also met under section two, thirty nine, two, C. Proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, specifically the buyer's road, uh, property. We received information and we gave staff direction regarding that item as well. Uh, and we also reviewed, uh, minutes. And, um, I believe somebody has a motion for those minutes.
Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Wadi Smale, that committee receives and approves the minutes of closed session dated June tenth, twenty twenty four.
Okay, I'll call the question on the approval of the minutes, all in favor?
Uh, good, unanimous.
And I believe, I don't have a closed session in front of me, so I believe. The only other thing left is a move by myself, adjourned?
Yeah, yeah. Move by myself, seconded by Mr. Ward, that the committee does now adjourn at nine four four P M.
Alright, I'll call the question on adjournments, not debatable, all in favor, Carrie?